I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, if you could please read our mission statement and take a look. Richmond Community Schools provide a quality education that powers students to be successful in a global community. I'll take a look. Board member Tato?
Here.
Board member Cunningham?
Here.
Board member Ordonez?
Here.
Board member Michelle?
Here.
Board member Sutton?
Here.
Board member Tuna? I'm here to have a look. Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve our agenda. So, please, support. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda. So, please, do I have to second? Thank you. Mr. Wongson?
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Teale for the personality report. Resignations and retirements. We have Brian Brewster, Stoney in Middle School. Maria Lee, Stoney at High School. Nancy Grumel, Special Education Teacher at the High School. And Renee Staples, Executive Director of Cartel of Educational Services. Amanda Turpin, Richmond Middle School Green Club Advisor. B.C. Wilson, GSRP Associate Teacher at LEED. For new hires, we have Christian Vetham, Summer School Lego City. Ashley Scherrett, ELA Teacher at the High School. And Angelo Vasino, Middle School Readers and Writers in Ceramics for Summer School. We have some appointments. Christina Valado, Summer School First Grade Fundamentals. Christy Krampen, Summer School Virtual Credit Recovery Supervisor. Adriana Fletcher, Summer School Social Education Fair Professional. Mr. Gibson is the Summer School Supervisor. Heidi Mangoni, Summer School Super, Denver Summer School Supervisor. Kaylee Naef, Summer School Step Literacy. Jackie Anbacher, Summer School Special Lit Bar Pro. Nancy Schulte, Summer School Middle School Readers and Writers. There were no errors. Brock, my sentence was a 528, like the board's application meeting minutes. It should have gotten tonight from last Thursday, the special meeting of the board. I think I checked everything. And then as far as the claims of account, there were just questions that Brock and Sam were minded to check.
Any discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our first item tonight on our presentation is our recognition of retirements.
We're going to start with Mrs. Barrett. So, tonight, we have a chance to recognize four individuals who have retired from Richmond Community Schools. They have wealth, experience, and knowledge that will be missed by the district. But we are also very proud of what they have done for us and would love to give thanks for them in their retirements. We're going to start with Mrs. Barrett. So, it's Heidi and Mike. Kind of a little different. We don't have a podium, so just come on up here.
Can you hear me up here? Is that good? Okay, perfect. I'm here with a mix of joy and sadness to talk about Mrs. Barrett's retirement and congratulate her. She is a member of our school community and our beloved third grade teacher. As she embarks on this new chapter of her life, we want to take a moment to celebrate her. She has dedicated over 20 years of educating and inspiring young minds at the elementary. Her classroom was a beacon of learning, creativity, and kindness. She was authentic with all that she did, and she gave important life lessons and love to learning for her students. Throughout her career, she has been more than just a teacher. She has been a mentor, a confidant, and a friend to her students and her colleagues alike. Her dedication to growth and well-being has been unwavering, and she's had a positive influence with all that she touches. We are incredibly grateful for Mrs. Barrett's commitment and to her education, and she's given such tirelessly efforts to create a nurturing and stimulating environment. She's been fun, engaging, and as we all know, she's very warm and caring, and she's a fan favorite among students and colleagues. Mrs. Barrett's transition to retirement, we want to extend our deepest thanks for her years of service and dedication. Congratulations, Ms. Barrett. May your retirement be filled with your new granddaughter, lots of golf, and days that are sweet as you are. Congratulations.
We're going to, we're going to go over to the wall here and we're going to give her her bow. There we go.
Okay, one, two, three. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's been my honor.
Thank you, Amy.
Before we go on, I just want to say to Mrs. Barrett, the conversation we had to move you from second to third was a huge change, and I know the kids in Richmond are much better for you. You are a phenomenal teacher.
Thank you.
Having been in your classroom many times, the way you interact with kids and transition them and the questioning techniques, it's no wonder our scores are the best in the county field.
I just want to say, every year I've been here, it's just been an honor to work with the families and the staff and the students, and I don't take that lightly. I am the one that feels lucky to have been here for them. So, thank you very much.
Our next retirement student, our next retirement is Mrs. Purcell. She was not able to be here tonight. But Mr. Morella and Mr. Knight, we're going to talk about Mrs. Purcell.
So, we're going to talk about Mrs. Purcell. In the short time that I've known Sherry Purcell, I've come to appreciate her remarkable qualities, both as an individual and as an educator. Sherry's dedicated 21 years to teaching in Richmond, bringing with her the expertise and compassion from her previous career as a respiratory therapist. This background undoubtedly influenced her approach to teaching science, where she excelled as an outstanding educator. Sherry's ability to forge positive relationships with her students created a welcoming and stimulating classroom environment. Her classes were not just educational but enjoyable, making students eager to learn. Sherry possessed a unique talent for inspiring even the most reluctant learners to develop a passion for science. Through investigative teaching methods, she made learning an exciting journey. She was adept at differentiating assignments, ensuring that all students, regardless of their ability or achievement levels, could thrive and succeed. The impact of her teaching at Richmond Middle School, we deeply felt and miss by her students. Beyond her professional prowess, Sherry is an extraordinary human being. Her kindness and compassion have been a cornerstone of her success as a teacher. Her positive energy is infectious, uplifting everyone around her. The entire staff will miss her greatly, not just from her contributions as an educator, but for her warmth and her camaraderie. As Sherry embarks on her well-deserved retirement, we wish her an abundance of rest, relaxation, joy, and fun. May this new chapter be filled with the same enthusiasm and fulfillment she brought to her career and to all of our lives.
When I started in Richmond 10 years ago, Sherry's classroom was one of the very first ones that I observed. And I was just amazed with the amount of interaction she had with kids, inspiring them to like science. How kids like science, but the way she did it in the classroom was just phenomenal. And it is a loss for us as a district, but again, well deserved for Sherry to have had as many years and be able to enjoy retiring. Deb Osterlin, actually retired a few months ago, but we know we're still waiting to get her back to the end of the year. She is not able to be here with us, but at the beginning, we have to speak about her.
So, I'm here to honor Debbie Osterlin. She's retired after 18 and a half years of exceptional service to our organization. Since joining us in 2006, Debbie has been a core of our team, consistently demonstrating dedication, professionalism, and ethics in her studies. Her contributions have really been invaluable to our success. Beyond Debbie's professional achievements, Debbie has been a prime and a great example of her team's excellence. Her working ethic has exceptional, is exceptional, making everyone around her better. We owe Deb Osterlin a debt of gratitude for her years of service, positive impact she has had on our students and our organization. While we remiss her presence, we are excited for her, and she embarks on this well-deserved retirement. So, please, remind me in expressing her words.
My story with Deb, about eight years ago, I was in lunch line at the elementary. The kids are, she comes up and said, "No, you don't have to wait in line." This little girl in line says, "Yes, he does." Obviously, that I go to the line and she has a smile on her face. She is one of the few people that you meet in life that I think everything is positive and just joy around. And she put a smile on kids' faces when they walk in a line or some layer, and that's one sort of thing. And she is a massive, significant partner. Our next one is Mrs. Speckman. We got a trio coming up?
We do.
The trio is the new Mrs. Speckman?
Yes.
We are here to celebrate and congratulate Mrs. Speckman. As you can see, she's devoted over 20 years in Richmond Community Schools, actually working in all three buildings. She often talks about teaching her students' parents, which shows her legacy and also maybe the indicator that it's time to do something different. She's been an advocate for her students, and she's always ensuring that they receive the support, encouragement, and resources that they need. Her commitment to foster countless students and their families is something that we really cherish with Mrs. Speckman. Throughout her career, she's demonstrated patience, compassion, and more patience. If you know Mrs. Speckman, she has a very quiet self-spirit that's really needed with the population of students that she serves. She's been an invaluable mentor to our Special Education Department at LEED. Her leadership and expertise has been instrumental to me. I have learned a lot from her through the years, and she fosters a culture of inclusion and acceptance for our school community. Congratulations, Mrs. Speckman. May your upcoming days be filled with time spent in the garden, enjoying time with your adult children, and getting all those house projects done that you talked about. Thank you for all you've done for Richmond Community Schools.
The calm. In all of our days, we have that momentum and just that internal chaos that goes just running a school system and all the things. Every time I would go to the elementary school, or really any building that Mrs. Speckman in, just having a conversation internally brings down the calm nature, and she had that effect with kids and her years there. So, I appreciate it because she was kind of a therapist for myself, but as well as everybody else. So, congratulations on her retirement.
I just want to add to that. Julie was here when I was in the building as principal and truly a wonderful person. You could depend upon her. She was always there. She, I agree with you about having a personal therapist. I knew I could go talk to her when things are pretty crazy, but she was just really good with the kids, and they really appreciated her. So, I wish you well.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our Academic Hall of Honor and Athletic Hall of Fame. Ms. Tato and Mr. Trend, please.
Well, we are back again this year. The Richmond Education Foundation and the Athletic Department, Richmond Community Schools, we are having our Hall of Honor and Hall of Fame class inductions in October. And this evening, Mr. Trend and I are here to announce those people that are being inducted. I am doing the Academic Hall of Honor on behalf of the foundation, and Mr. Trend will announce our Athletic Hall of Fame. So, let's get started. Our first inductee is Scott Melwitz. Scott is the Executive Creative Director at Walt Disney Imagineering, and he is a class of 1981 graduate. Our next inductee is Dr. James Maskey, who is Professor in the Department of Biology at the University of Mary in Bismarck, North Dakota, and he was a graduate of the class of 1994. Next, Mark Myers, Retired General Motors Executive Global Director of Vehicle Performance Engineering. He was a member of the class of 1981. And finally, Dr. Ryan Shinska, who is a practicing dentist with the Hope Smiles Organization, and he is a member of the class of 2001. The Education Foundation, we are thrilled and honored to be able to induct these four people into the Hall of Honor in October.
And like the foundation, we're equally as excited to induct our second Hall of Fame class. We thought following last year's class would be tough, and then we had a batch of inductees we think is very well-deserving. So, our very first is Jack Fenton, who was class of 1936. He was a standout football player here at Richmond, a three-year letter winner at MSU, or at the time, it was the Agriculture College of the State of Michigan. And he was drafted by the Lions in the 10th round, number 81 overall. Next is Michelle Teschler, class of 2001. She was a three-sport athlete at Richmond. She was a three-time All-State softball player, played collegiately at U of M, and was on their national championship team in 2005. Our coach inducted this year is Coach Glenn News. He coached from 1991 to 2006, and I just brought her the season of '05, '06. I walked by the showcase, and there's an article, if you haven't seen it, in the showcase in the 400 Hall, with a news article about his first year here and what the program was to where he got it to with seven league titles and a regional championship, 12-1 season in 2003. Our team inductee is the 2002 state champion wrestling team. Their record of 49-5 still stands as a national record. They also set school records for wins, takedowns, falls, and team points in a season. Our next is our 2012 competitive cheer team. And I did not tell Coach Mathis that this was being inducted. They were undefeated in that season, winning the BWAC District Regional and State Championships. This was the first title for RHS with cheer as an MHSAA-sponsored sport, and the first other coach Mathis. And our final inductee in the contributor category is Pat Schweiger. Pat is a Richmond grad and has been instrumental in the fundraising efforts for both the wrestling and the cheer programs, raising a ton of money for record boards, mats, trips, and whatever else those teams need. Yeah, like last year, the ceremony will be the Sunday following homecoming, so October 6th at 1:00 P.M. in the auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our augmented and virtual reality in the classroom.
Well, good evening. Joining us, we have Ms. Gallagher, as well as we have Stephen and we have Joseph that are joining us today. Joshua, sorry, Josh. So, what is augmented and virtual reality, first of all? Augmented reality overlays digital content such as images, videos, or data onto real-world devices like smartphones, tablets. So, you can take your smartphone and actually put it toward a QR code and let it show you the world's crust and all the different layers to it. You can see it, you can interact with it. It's very neat. The difference is, the virtual reality, it usually takes some kind of advanced technology, such as the goggles and those kind of headsets, and it becomes a lot more immersive. It becomes a 3D experience. So, now you're talking, you can actually see, for example, a human heart pumping, and you get to see how cells can split on a molecular level that you would never be able to see with your own eye, which is part of the reason why augmented virtual reality is so engaging and so amazing for students in education. Some of the biggest things that we see is it increases engagement for learners because it is so high interest, high motivation. It keeps students engaged in the content, immersive experiences that they would never be able to normally have day-to-day, as well as accessibility that these technologies, that they're going to be able to experience using these technologies so that they can become problem solvers on their own. We are going to discuss CoSpace, which was an app that we utilized this school year for the course, and I'm going to let Ms. Gallagher take on that.
Okay, our first class was a really, I don't know, being a really fun class for me to do. I will have to, I have a floor line to a mermaid doing this because I don't really know how to do a headset. I had to depend a lot on students like these that knew how to use headsets so that I could also learn how to do that to effectively teach the class and kind of burn off each other. CoSpace was a software program that you use that the students can learn content and create their own content in augmented reality and virtual reality. What we did is the students would create their virtual world depending on which project they were doing, and then I created a Google site, and those worlds got put onto that, and then that got bookmarked onto the headset so they could go in and check their world. The neatest thing about that is it looks fine on the computer when you do it, but then when you go put the headset on, you go into the world, actually. You go into the washing machine, it's like up here, so like, whoa, it doesn't work. So, you had to, they'd learn about scale and go in and fix things. There's coding involved, the animation involved, a lot of things like that. This program wouldn't be possible if without the help of people like to kind of acknowledge. For one, Mark wasn't at the ComIIC this summer either. I reached out to him right away and said, "Help." And he said, "That's out of body lead." So, he contacted me with Andy Mann, who is one of the directors at Mesquita IIC. And he zoomed with me, it was awesome. He like walked me through it, showed me what to do, and he was excited. He was like this little kid, "Your stuff, your kid's so brave." You're talking about, of course, that you're not really about that. And then, of course, I'd like to acknowledge Alamo Products, which by the past six years, through their grant opportunities, Richmond School of Surf has earned over $20,000 worth of grant money from their foundation. And there are true representatives here tonight that I'd like to acknowledge. I have Gina Walker, who is the Accountant Program Officer of Alamo Products. Penny Doudin Huskett, who is the Audition President, is awesome. I've got a quick little video that I want to show you, just kind of get you a little synopsis.
You're going to see it firsthand?
Yeah. All right, we're going to, we'll see it later. And one other piece, major piece, important piece of this is also teaching internet safety, learning about their digital footprint, being safe online, being appropriate, because they could go and research and get 3D models and things that they would download and put out for content, just about being safe. Creating passwords, learning about, you know, identifying your own name with themselves up on there to see if they were on there. It's kind of fun hearing them talk about, "I'm on there for this," or "I'm not on there." Well, it's a good thing. You don't have a digital footprint yet, which is a good thing. So, those were some of the other parts. So, the next part is, I'm going to be a customer. And that's some of the students there going in and testing some of their work, some of the ones working on their worlds. So, we're going to give you an opportunity to rock some headsets with us. So, we're going to, between myself, Stephen, and Joshua, we're going to put those on for you, how you get in. The first project that we're going to have you look at is they got to, they had to download a house plan or apartment plan or draw their home and put it into the CoSpace and then create that virtual world. So, that's kind of the one where they went in and they realized things had to be scaled right and programmed correctly. So, they're going to help you and get you into there so that you can experience that.
Do you want to come up and talk about the class and how much fun it was first before you begin your demonstration?
So, I really liked the class because Ms. Gallagher was really helpful, and she showed us how to work CoSpaces and like collect them. And if you were stuck, like always, she was like, she just asked me for help. And if she didn't help you, then you could just ask any other student in the class.
Joshua. So, it was fun because I have vast experience for coding, robotics. I just wanted to put it back to different kinds of views, AR.
We have four virtual reality headsets. Do I have four of you who would like to, who would like to penetrate, to see the world that the students created?
Yes. I have one.
It's really, really cool. You have to do it. It's so cool. Okay, so my first one over here, we'll get to it. Yes, and the fact that you're looking at something they created, put together, I found that to be very interesting. I'm sorry for this. I'm sorry to say. I didn't get exactly what I was doing, but that was very cool.
I think you definitely would check that out. It's very cool.
Which you don't realize. Yeah, me, that's what my thing too. Did they set up a boundary for you guys? Did you have a boundary? I just kept answering. Like too out, it would flash right. Then I knew to come back or back off or go right or left. No, I skipped that. That was why I almost committed. We're trying to go outside.
And I just want to thank Ms. Gallagher for all of her work in this class, and it was the first time we ran it ever, and it's been in our catalog. But kids wanted it, they took it, and they, this is what they said about it. They said it was fun finding out what was wrong and fixing it, like what Ms. Gallagher was just saying, the scaling, things like that. I liked it because it was different than other classes. It was totally immersive and very technological equipment being used. So, they got to see their creations come to life, which was really powerful. But thank you so much, Ms. Gallagher, for all that you have done for this class and for all of, you know, you wrote this grant, initiated this. So, thank you so much for everything for that. So, you had your demonstration. That'd be great. So, do you have any questions to work here?
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about AR or VR or?
I'm not sure they can help me answer right here. How many kids were in the class? First semester, I had 14, second semester was, the first semester was 16, sorry, and then 14 was the second semester. So a lot of work, having just those headsets in the classroom, a lot of kids were like, "Help." I'm like, "I'm going to rail virtual reality too." We're all spread, I'm sure.
What grades?
For seventh and eighth.
And how many headsets were you given?
About eight.
So we had to purchase?
No, I've done all.
Through the brand?
It was all brand.
All right, fantastic, all right, so.
Thank you, we're going to move on to the next one.
Hi, here we go, new course overview, so really quickly, I'm going to, before I write it to start, just a little bit about our process to integrate new courses here, so it all starts off, we're typically around January, we'd send out a blank course proposal form, it allows teachers to offer their voice of what kind of classes they would want to propose to see if we want to run. These courses are then reviewed to see if this is something that aligns to our vision and our mission for our catalog, the opportunities for our students. Lastly, or most importantly, students then get to, they have the opportunity to select courses, and we know that the higher the student wants to take the class, the more likely it will run. We had very high interest for both of these courses, which were exciting, and that's when the planning began, so then we set up a planning session where myself and the instructional coaches met with the teachers that the courses were going to go forward, we got to meet and collaborate for a half day, and then at the end of the year, it's the time for reflection after the class has gone through, you can see what went well, what can the class improve on, we make those adjustments, and ultimately leading to student success, and after going through the course one year, you're going to make those fine tweaks and adjustments and do it again, make it better. Just a little bit about our process. The two courses that were proposed, I was just absolutely delighted when they came through because this is such an amazing opportunity for students, and no one's going to be able to describe it better than Ms. Amy Zimmer, that I'm inviting up now, who proposed the class.
Hello, I'm Amy Zimmer, I'm super excited for the argument of writing this session because I'm excited because I think this test can offer a ton of skills for students, one, I think arguing constructively, not just arguing, the constructive part, speaking, you know, like keeping eye contact, correct volume, the assistive thing, teaching them how to do research, students are willing to do that, organizing their research, the list is endless for this class. So I think, so we went through on our planning day, kind of broke the class down into units, so it did eight units total, so the first unit would be discipline and research, what is good research? Students, when you say research, that's a big thing for them to do, so helping them break that skill down, and helping them look at, okay, is this a good website? Wikipedia is not a good website, I'd like to tell them a story that my cousin, she was married at the time, and she went in and changed a famous baseball player's last name to her last name, and asked the students to look it up, when they all emailed her maiden name, she knew that they went to Wikipedia. So we teach them things like that, Wikipedia is not a reputable source, but maybe you want to go to something like mixture.com if you're looking at something, just showing them the difference, also looking at when was this information published, is this information super old and not relevant anymore, or do we need information that's from 2024? So that would be the first unit. The second unit would be wanting to graphic organizers, helping them organize their information, which is, one of the graphic organizers that I have is in the picture, so make their position statement, and then for example, if they said dogs are better than cats, so that would be their position statement, dogs are better, and then coming up with the reasons, and then the next part is having facts, students sometimes like to put in the facts part to support what they're trying to say, so taking the research that they did in unit one, and learning how to organize that in unit two, as we build through. So then going to the third unit, Scholastic has this, has like a mini debate unit kind of thing, so we would do that, where they give you their prompting questions, and help students, so kind of to narrowing it down for them at first before they are less figured out on their own, give them topics, then they have to pick a side, and then they have to find the research, so that taking the research would be the unit one, using graphic organizers in unit two, so work in unit three. And then in unit four, we would look at what is debates, and we'd break down the different parts, so what is introduction of debate, what is a process, evaluation of debate, what are rebuttals of light, and then finally like their closing arguments. And then in unit five, which I'm super excited about, we'll be doing a Shark Tank kind of thing.
I know! It's so fun. So this would kind of be our halfway point, and letting the students get to try to sell a topic or idea without doing the second half, which if we're here in a debate, you have to like kind of go against the other side, with a Shark Tank, they would just get to focus on selling our idea. So how can I sell my idea, how can I take my research, and spend all this time organizing, and I'm going to try to convince somebody to agree with me or to buy into what I'm saying. So we have to do a Shark Tank type thing halfway through the semester, that means practice those skills. And then in unit six, we would do mini debates, where they would take all the stuff that they have learned and do it at a smaller scale, kind of quick, make sure we run through all of the parts, but again, these practice skills, put in a smaller setting. And then our unit seven would be working on your presentation skills, which is something that I think students need help with, right, club speaking is not very friendly, if you tell students your presentation, the chromes that will come out of students is quite vocal. So I think working on their confidence with that, letting them express their ideas, again, arguing constructively, supporting themselves with the correct volume, eye contact, and that type of thing. And then unit eight would be a final debate where we do after-school, invite parents to come and watch everything that the students have done throughout the semester, and how they have. Would be the end of the unit, and the end of the semester, so I'm super excited about it, and we did a lot of other detective topics in this class. I know. You do, in your backup documentation, have your sample, your syllabus, and yours, headed up to the sequence for the course, so that's part of what we do in our planning day, as well as assessments and working backwards. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Zimmer of the proposed new class that's going into effect next year?
I'd like the idea from the parents.
I think it's really, it's nice to bring the community, and I want to see the things that are happening, and the skills that are being learned and taught in this class.
So the grades are going to be?
Seven.
Seven and eight, very similar.
I love it.
Oh my god, it's a good word. It's all coming at you. You're going to be like, please.
I'd like four numbers.
Yeah. We're so excited about the Shark Tank planning, I think we went off on a tangent for.
Yeah, I mean, I'm super excited about that, I think it'll be a lot of fun to, that they get to just focus on selling their ideas, and I know, I taught a class similar to this previously, and a lot of times students get very hung up on the other side of whatever else would be said, what are they going to argue against? So I'd like to get you on topic through doing the Shark Tank, where they just focus on getting their idea out, where they don't have to stress about what the other side's going to say, that would come at a later time, letting them kind of develop the skills, practice them before we add on more stuffs.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, American Wars, and this is Mr. Zach Yost.
I wanted to add to that, as a high school teacher, it's comforting to know that some of the students will be coming from the middle school, having had that skill, because that is something that we definitely see lacking in a lot of areas. But yes, my proposed course is American Wars. I love history, I'm a history teacher, and American wars are my specialty, especially the most recent ones. On the screen here, you see a breakdown of how the course would be split up throughout the quarters. I'm very excited about this because when students learn through their history classes, I enjoy learning about wars, some don't enjoy it, but because history classes are so compacted into one or two semesters, you can really only spend so much time on something that you think should take an entire year, meaning that most of our students know something about the First World War, Second World War, maybe Vietnam War, but there are many, many on this list that I know students have asked to learn about, and also some that the students may not have heard of. So this is visiting in some depths for some of them, and brushing over for others, but we'll start with the French and Indian War, then we'll move on to the American Revolution, the Barbary Wars, the War of 1812, Mexican-American War, the Indian Wars, Spanish-American War, Philippine-American War, Boxer Rebellion, Mexican Expedition, World War I, the Russian Civil War, Latin American Occupations, World War II, Korean War, Vietnam War, other proxy wars of the Cold War, the invasions of Grenada in Panama, the First Gulf War, the intervention in Somalia, peacekeeping in the Balkans, the Afghanistan War, the Second World War, and more modern interventions in Africa and the Middle East. My goal when students even see this list is to say, oh my goodness, I had no idea. And maybe some of you have not heard of these, and that's my goal, I want students to not only be aware of them, but to understand why. War is such a massive deadly deal, why does it happen, what are the consequences? This is from my syllabus, it says, "This course is designed to enable students to understand the following regarding each American war: causes, what innovations occurred during its course, and outcome. These outcomes might be political, economical, territorial, social, or technological. Students will be tasked with identifying similarities and connections between the wars, and will also discover the relevance that these historical events have in our modern times today." There are many, many things I want to focus on, but the ones I wanted to bring to your attention was, I want students to be able to place themselves in a soldier's shoes by reading primary sources, diaries from these soldiers. One example you see on the screen is a book I somewhat recently came across, it was written by the daughter of a World War II soldier, who compiled her father's diaries and memoirs, and she wrote this with a high school history teacher to make sure that it connects well with high school students. I recently read it, and I believe that it's an excellent way for students to be able to think, oh my goodness, this man was only a few years older than I am today. The top photograph, black and white, one is actually my grandfather, Vance Yost, I'm very excited to tell the students his personal experiences in World War II as a combat rifleman and as a POW under the Germans, so the students will not only understand this happened to somebody, but this happened to a farm boy from Michigan, and some of those students might be farm boys from Michigan. And then the bottom is just a painting of George Washington at Valley Forge. War isn't just about fighting, it's about surviving, whether surviving the enemy bullets or surviving the elements, just building a fire so you don't freeze to death, I want these students to really understand what these soldiers made of that. The students will also get a good idea of how the US military functions, and has functioned. The United States has been around for over 200 years, meaning a lot of things have changed. Students will learn about basic military structure, for some it might just be an interest, for some they might plan to go in the military, and this will give them a head start in understanding that structure. And students will also get to learn about how our soldiers sustain. The image you see on the bottom there is Civil War hard tack, it's a bread that you bake at a very low temperature to get all the moisture out, and it's so hard that it could break your teeth, but the point of it is that there's no moisture, and it doesn't go bad. So students will learn, how did these soldiers eat these breads that are hard as a rock? How did the soldiers make the breads? Was it nutritious? These are the daily activities in war that people don't always think about. And I should also say about place yourself in a soldier's shoes, you may notice what I'm wearing, this is an authentic Class B Marine uniform from World War II.
Which he collects.
I do, I collect uniforms mostly from the 20th century, but as often as possible, I like to bring my items in for students to see, for students to touch, or in the case of, this is another authentic piece, a US M1 helmet from World War II. I'd love students to be able to see these, to put them on, so they can think, oh my goodness, that's heavy, they have to wear that all the time? Or wow, that uniform is more comfortable, or less comfortable than I expected, I want students to become as immersed as possible in this. And it's not always just equipment that soldiers might use, but I also have things I can bring in, like ration cards that US civilians might be using during World War II. So I really want students to be able to immerse in this. And then finally, what's the good of studying a war if you don't know the causes and the consequences? Why did the United States go to war in Afghanistan? Oh, well, that's easy, 9/11. Ah, not so much. Why 9/11? Why the United States? Osama bin Laden wasn't even from Afghanistan, so how does it get tied into this? So students need to be able to understand why did these happen? And also, what were the consequences? The top right image you see here, this is Mexico before the Mexican-American War, what caused that war, and what is an obvious consequence of that war? Well, you can see California, Arizona, many, many modern US states came from that. So this is just a very, very brief overview, but I'm very, very excited to be able to walk students through this, and to be able to learn from the students. The greatest thing about history is that it's impossible to know everything, so when a student asks me something, I'm not afraid to say, I don't know, look that up and tell me. Do you have any questions?
I'd sure like to take both of your classes. I can say that I have observed Zach teach history, and yeah, he brings it alive, and he does a really nice job engaging with students and just bringing it alive to what, you know, just your imagination on what happened.
I think it's important to bring this to you tonight, to know that there are so many passion projects that teachers have that want to share their passion with students, and having that voice is so important in getting the students interested, and they're just going to love these classes, so thank you so much for all of your work that you've done toward it for next school year, I know the kids are going to be really excited, so.
Do we know?
Yeah, they're, oh, they're like, I'm taking it.
They're running.
They're running, so.
I know my older son was, had one of your classes, and he was telling me about how you wanted to do this, and he was super excited to see.
That's very comforting to hear.
But I appreciate most of them, I want to name the staple for this is, every teacher in our district went into education because they have a passion for sparking the interest in kids, and over time, a lot of the mandates that were faced with, that can easily be diminished. Projects like this, or courses like this, my freshman, I was not a social studies fan at all, sorry. My freshman year in college, I had a teacher who did very similar, taught about the people involved, and that changed my whole perspective, this isn't about memorizing dates and wars and time, it's about the situations that they were going through, and understanding people who made a difference for you, what they were thinking, and it's not that they were thinking wrong, or what's wrong with it's another perspective. The argument that I was talking through, I remember before, just the ability, I see this from the braiding Dr. Lads class. Just giving kids the ability to, I think in our society, we've lost this ability, to be able to have a debate, and it's okay if you don't agree on the same topic, but to understand and respect that there's another viewpoint to consider, and not that I'm changing your way, but just to really appreciate it. So these two teachers are just proof of examples of our many teachers in this district that over the last several years have done passion projects, and guiding them, getting them off the ground and writing something. Thank you very much for taking this.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is our first proposed overnight extended trip request. This is Daniel from Robotic.
Hello, everyone. I'm Shelley DeLeo, co-founder for robotics. I'm looking for approval for our overnight trip to Indianapolis, Indiana. This event has been a dream of ours for years and is not easy to get into. This is one of the most prestigious events during the offseason, it's being one of the most competitive and high-profile events of the year. So we're looking forward to attend this in July, July 11th through the 14th.
Anyone have any questions, Harold? Do you get invited to it, or do you have to, okay, that's what it is?
So shortly after the season ends.
So shortly after the season ends, they open up the invite application. So they usually receive just under 100 applications, and they only take about 68. So we actually weren't part of the first ballot of inviteees to go to this event, but there were certain people who couldn't say whether or not they could go by the 27th. So on the 28th, we were contacted that we were now invited as the second ballot. So now we're receiving. But in the application process, it's four host teams that run this entire event in Indiana. And they sit and roll through 13-question applications and read everyone's responses and do the research on their teams and then put out a final application list. And I think it's March 20th.
Two questions. First one is, so what is it that you guys do that had this event?
So it's no different than a normal event, other than the fact that it's, you have not just teams from Indiana, which is outside of our sphere of influence in Michigan, but teams from maybe the South Carolina region, or sometimes, in fact, this year more than likely, a team from California, teams from Texas. It's just as impactful as the world competition, if not more, because it's a smaller sample size compared to the 200-some teams that are from Michigan and our side country home that have to go down to Houston.
So you will be competing, though? Like it is competition? Okay, I wasn't sure if those like learning or like competition type.
There's some other charity organizations involved in it, too, that help support the event itself. So students will have the opportunity to interact with some of those organizations. And there's a quilt of a lot of teams from World's gave shirts. So they hand some together a quilt of shirts and auction that out. Give that one to your.
So then, second question, like is there, like how do we, what's the cost involved?
The cost is about $10 for the entry fee. And then it's just food and overnight stay. So for each student, it would be about $200, $5 roughly, that's for the hotel and for food for going out there. And I have parents and myself who go out there and John can do it.
So then, like as far as the funds go, like, do you guys split that up? Are you asking for money?
No, we're not asking for any money. It's just, we're just need to get your people to go for overnight. And this is solely on the kids and the parents that want to, that the whole team will not involve.
How about how many?
About six. Oh, six students?
That's just students.
Yeah, okay.
There is some.
So I think there's 10. There's 10 of us out there.
And that everyone's going? And they're not going, they're choosing to because, or how did that work?
There's track going out weekend that's going on. There's, or they have to work or so.
Okay. Are you using your current robot?
Yes. Yes, we are.
So is that same?
It's the same.
Competition.
Yes, it's the exact same objective that we've used this year that was in Houston.
So they also do scholarships there?
They do. And on top of your $1,000 entry fee, every team is required to bring at least one backpack full of supplies that they do want to make students come at the event or surrounding venues in our Indianapolis. So that's another thing that we're preparing as we prepare.
So the district, with this as the previous presentation is, there is a time constraint. And so getting in the second round, getting those so late, that's why it's on the agenda for approval tonight, too. We talked about the second one. There's a time, time constraint in that, too. But the board's not opposed to the second one. It's kind of your, because I think everyone that person will figure to officially in Friday.
Yeah, this past Friday, I had to turn in our, send it on me. But the gentleman that I was working with, who's running it, he understood that I had to do this. And he said, "Thanks for the heads up and the stuff."
And you guys are paying your own registration fee as well?
That would come out of our account.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We will be voting later.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome to say if not. I will have to shoot you an email.
Can you shoot me an email? All right, awesome, thank you.
Our next item on our agenda is our proposed overnight extended trip request for our cheer team at Gray Rapids.
I'm just here tonight to ask, we're going to it. It's a camp. It's not a competition, something like that. It's training for the girls. And we're going to Gray Rapids. It's July 12th and 13th. So we'll go up on Friday, the 12th, spend the night with the girls, and then the camp will be held in on Saturday.
Have you ever done this before?
We've done all kinds of different camps over the years. Sometimes we've put on our own, sometimes we've had it here, we've gone local, but this is same company we always use. We're just going to a different location. Just a chance to.
And all the students will be going?
Yep. We just finished our tryouts last week, so we have 28 girls on the team this year. They'll all be going, the coaches will be going, there'll be a couple parents. No cost for any, yeah, it's, we're taking care of them. So we're not asking for any money because it's our personal training.
Anyone have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is it fair to ask if there are any of those?
We're not going to vote on it.
But it is, right on the 4th of July, it's like I was saying, is there, if there's any concern, normally at camps, there's no concerns expressed.
Why can't we just vote on it? We could. We can amend our agenda, vote on it. Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda, adding item 13D, proposed overnight extended trip request to Gray Rapids. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Vote. Motion carries. Okay, we will be adding that item. So we will vote.
Kelly. We will vote tonight. So I'll send you a text or email.
Perfect. Thank you. And if anything comes up, and you ended with other questions, just let me know.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, next item on our agenda is our district school improvement plan.
In your backups documentation, you have a copy of the MYKIP process, the Michigan Continuous Improvement Plan that we have. And I just kind of wanted to give you an update of where we are on our district goals. This plan is based all around student engagement. And I said it before last year, but I'll say it again. The number one link to academic success is engage time. How long students are engaging in something new with a project, they're involved, actively engaged in it is the number one link to academic success. And I have some amazing data to show you. So our first strategy was all about competency, building high-quality instruction in classrooms. I have lovely Kagan data to share with you for how it's gone so far. 74% of teachers said that discipline problems have lessened. As a result of Kagan structures, 93% of students say that they enjoy class more. 94% of students are developing positive social skills, cooperation, teamwork. And 94% of teachers using Kagan strategies in the classroom say the students are more actively engaged since implementing Kagan. We are proudly bringing them back for the third and the last PBI installment, August 28th, for the Win-Win Classroom Series. It's all based on putting it all together and really helping develop those classroom management strategies. So next, I would like to share with you some of these things. We have our professional development plan. We're teaching and staffed, it's set up for Kagan. Positive intervention plans, our behavior plans. I would like to bring your attention to our, I gave you some lovely handouts. So, and I, I'm sorry, but Ms. Jack pointed out that I made a mistake on my graph. It says district attendance trend, and it really should say absenteeism trend, because I don't want my attendance bar going down. I want my absenteeism going down, which it is. So this is fantastic data. If you want to take a look at that, bar drastically going down. When we first implemented this engagement, District Improvement Plan, we had 23,267 absences a year. And this year, after closing it out, we have 19,662. So when you look on, really on page 10 of the District Improvement Plan, you can see where we are, where it says we're not on target. Our goal for 630 2024 was to decrease our attendance data by 3%. And we have proudly decreased it by 15.5%. So that's amazing, and you can see it all broken down by grade level. Do you remember when I stood up here and said kindergarten has the worst attendance in the entire district? And everybody going, "No, no way, that can't be true." Well, it's not true today. And that's what we can say. It's not true today. First grade is holding the torch proudly as the best attendance in the district this year. Kindergarten, not worse. This is amazing news. So, and also, we go to secondary. I would like to bring your attention to behavior. So we were going, our goal was to decrease 3% for discipline referrals. In the year 21, 22, when the data that we used to develop the District Improvement Engagement Plan, the top offenses in all three buildings was no subtype. And so when you think, when you analyze data, you got to think also, what can you, what can you improve with processes and procedures and things? Well, we actually had a dropout saying, "No subtype." So how can you intervene using data with no subtype? You can't. So proudly, not, no, that's no longer a subtype. Now we can really address the 23, 24 top offenses, which is inappropriate behavior for this poor student. So it's, now we can address it. No subtype, we weren't really quite able to make up a plan how to address that with students, right? But right now, we can with our young students. They have an entire PBI as planned. We've seen evidence of this through their character, their monthly character assemblies, the parenting empowerment night for digital detoxing. We have student support meetings every single week. And our student staff wellness committees, which probably painted our mural, is all part of how it helped kids get engaged. On that second page of data, though, there's also a very lovely graph that talks about behavior incidences by district. When this plan was first developed, we had 5,067 discipline log entries sent into the state. This year, we had 1,276. And where we are supposed to only be at a decrease of 3%, we have a decrease of 74.8% in discipline referrals. We had a goal of increasing 7% of participation for co- and extracurricular activities. And we added three new Schedule Bs positions. We added our, we brought back our theater for the Schedule Bs last year. This year, we had the introduction of the chess club as well as esports, which has brought us, our goal was 7%, to a 9.8% increase at the high school, a 2.9% increase at the middle school, for an overall 12.7% increase on that goal. So so far, we are three for five. This is great. The next one is, of course, the increasing the 3% for inventory of co- and extracurricular activities. And like I just said, we added on the esports, which is quite popular. The chess club, which had an astounding turnout. And there was actually quite a lot of research on brain development, on the importance of chess, as well as the theater, so promoting our fine arts. The last page, though, is probably my favorite, and I think you can guess why. I didn't print, you can see it's printed in color. But if we had been declined, if we had been negative, if we had gone down in any way, it would have shown up in red. And you don't see the color red on this sheet of paper because there was not one grade that had negative growth percentiles. Every single grade level made their student growth percentile for this school year. It is. So reading was fantastic. So in the fall, we averaged about 52 percentile of students that met their student growth percentiles, probably went up to 62%. So just in reading alone, we saw a 10% increase for reading, according to the NWA scores. Our goal was to increase 10% for high-quality instruction. Let's see if we get it. The last one here. Mathematics, though, that was, woo, 55% in the fall, 71% in the spring. 16% increase from fall to spring in mathematics. And if you look at the chart from that, from '22, '23 to here, it is a huge difference. And we did make it, 13% growth is evident through the NWA data here. And just really probably, so far, we've met, every single one of our goals are all on page 10. The next set of goals is the cell you're going to be increasing, but you can see the due date isn't until 2025. So we are on the way. And all of these have, we've met every single one of these goals that were set for this school year. And I hope you enjoy the data that was presented with it. Does he may have any questions about where we are in our District Improvement Plan?
Amazing.
I know it's not publicly released, but is there any teaser that you would do?
Yeah. I think we have a few teasers. The few teasers would be that our teachers are ecstatic about their growth, especially in mathematics. They are, they are very excited. And a little tidbit, it's not released, but our top grade level may or may not have shown an 8 to 10% increase alone in said mathematics. So now on top of all of the top accounting. So just a little tidbit.
Will they put the coming year out?
No, it will not release usually until September, and I'm scrambling to get to October.
They usually release it the week before Labor Day is when parents are making their school choice decision.
That's right.
But it's remarkable. And the programs that the board has approved have provided the resources to work for our staff to get them.
May I?
Yeah. And my creator benefited big time this year. Three scores that she had plateaued for 10 years.
Were there less tears?
Yes.
Then that's wonderful. Hers or her doctor's? We're going to miss you, Renee. Thank you, Renee. I knew you were just an oversight, and their teachers are implementing it, what brought a lot of things. And really helped get better. We've improved under your watch. Okay, next item on our agenda is our 2024 village tax request.
Tammy's going to come join us. And we are going to look at, every year, we have to send our village rate to the townships and the city where they can issue the summer tax. Let Tammy explain what you see in front of you in the package. We just, we've seen it every year in June.
Okay, so it's time to levy our village rates for upcoming fiscal year. So this is based on our 2024 property tax values. And what we, I'm sorry, 2023 property tax values that we levy in 2024. You can see we start the top line in the bottom section is our operating village, which is our voted operating village. We started out at 18 mills. That in 2021, for that tax levy, we were going back by heading to 17.924 mills. There's no further reduction again this year. That was the only year we had a roll. That was the only year we had a rollback. So for the general fund, our operating village levy would be 17.924. Good news also on the debt side, is we've paid off two debts in the last two years. We can add up column nine of our village levy. You can see that it hits to a total of 6.7 mills, which is .25 mills less than it has been. So we've been at 6.95 mills the past several years. This will take it down from 25 to 6.7.
Should my property tax be?
Depends what happens to your values.
We're levying.
The mills that were, that were levying, yes, has gone down. So all the, all the factors, you see they appear last year's, this year's. As you see, a decrease in what we're levying to pay the debt. The challenge is if you're levying your houses, where you may not exactly see it. But we are, we're not levying more than what we need to levy.
That's the help for the 2024, the last period we will have later on.
Just so you know, the Headley Amendment, if you recall, last year, is about $18,000 to our budget. Unless we go back to the community and say we want to override the Headley Amendment, it's $18,000 every year that moves out of. So we, I recommend it not going back because we can afford to support that in the budget.
Yeah, so for '21, '22, '23, '24, it's going to be nearing around $18,000 in total over the next four years. So we'll be back. Okay, next item is our fiscal year 2025 budget discussion.
All right, you each, you should have a board packet that looks like this, pages inside each way. The top sheet, you can take out. Those are the preliminary tentative assignments that went out to teaching staff that I'm gonna speak to it a little later. But there's a couple documents here, and I'm gonna go in the order of the document. So based on what we have talked about over the last several weeks, this is where we believe we'd be as of today. Our revenue for what we know, and we know really nothing, if I'm not mistaken. So, but our assumptions and what we believe we're gonna get show a decrease in revenue of $623,000, increase in revenue. And I'll explain that in just a minute. Then below it, you'll see the current budget amendment one that you approved back in February, March. And then all of our conversations, putting staff into their tentative assignments. We have the supply dollars that we talked about, subco, all of that. This is the net. So if you go down to the very bottom, you will see our total expenses. We're $23,67,000 for the fiscal year this year, budget amendment one. They are $22,855,000. You will see we anticipated at the fiscal year in February, our first amendment, to put $12,000 into fund balance. So refresh your memory. In this year's budget, there were several things that we budgeted for the whole year that we knew the positions were not going to be there the whole year. But when we build next year, we rolled it so those positions were automatically in the budget for the whole year. This shows using fund balance of almost $400,000. I know that may make you nervous, but let me explain. Our current fund balance is $3,63,000. We anticipate in our preliminary numbers to be able to put about $700,000 when you do the budget in June, into fund balance. Again, that came from a good chunk of that, our positions. Mr. Osborne was built in, he was only here half year, but we built a physical position in. So he had nothing to make up for 20, a half year salary. We had a counselor leave us, we have her whole position in there, but we didn't, we're filling it. It has all the supplies, they just have things that don't get spent. We budgeted fuel costs. We never know where fuels are gonna run. We always budget very conservative, they have enough money there to make sure we don't run out of fuel. We anticipate that. Our electrical and water and all that is lower than what we had budgeted. So all of these little things is what's adding. And that's ultimately, when you build a budget, that's what you want. At the end of the month, we do our own budgets. We don't always wanna be pulling out the savings, we wanna be putting into the savings. And over the last several years, we've been in a position that to be able to build that up. I believe my first year here, we were around $560,000. And so it, it has increased, so we have done a good job. So let me explain the revenue assumptions that we're making and the expenses. At this point, does anybody have any questions about this doc? The second one you have should be this one. It is the revenue. It is all of our revenue. So everything in bright green is our per pupil allocation calculation. Tammy, can you help explain how that, how one affects the other?
So the state of Michigan gives us a per pupil amount. It's made up of what we collect locally in property taxes. And then the foundation, the rest of it comes from the state of Michigan. So basically, they assume on our property, non homestead, non agricultural properties, we're gonna collect 18 mills. And they calculate what our local portion is from the 18 mills. And when they set the state foundation, the difference between what we collect locally and that foundation is what the state sends us. So that's why you see state lines, state revenue sources, as well as property taxes, and that brings us.
So at the beginning, you'll see the, you'll see the property tax. You'll see here's what our amendment is, here's what we anticipate the general fund. And you'll see some increases in collection of property tax. You'll also see, as you scroll down to the other green lines on here, which, whoops, sorry, are the column. You'll see the proposal, obligation, some went down. So depending on what we use for per pupil affects those green lines. You'll see as you go through, there's some drops. The ones in red are, we received it at $162,000. I'm on line 42 for enrollment stabilization. We had a little dip in our enrollment this year. We anticipated our enrollment to go up, so we are budgeting that money is gone. We're not gonna get an enrollment stabilization. You'll see some of the other red lines, which are the CTE equipment grant, about the. You will see on here the 97th per pupil safety that we got, the risk assessment. We got those, implement them, they're not in any of the current budgets from the state. You will see we got two GSRP startup grants. If you were at the building on Friday, all that new stuff came in. So we have spent those in the budget from the state, they're not there, so we zeroed those out. You'll see all our ESSER funds, the $583,000, our last ESSER that we were given. We spent it all, so that's a loss of revenue. So when you add up all of these pluses and minuses, anything that is in yellow or orange is a grant. So in the budget, the revenue equals the expenses. So we didn't change anything from that angle because we don't know our title allocation, we don't know our title. And we have estimates that they're giving us, some of the, but we usually do that after the amendment, once we know officially what our dollar values are. Did I miss anything on this one, Tammy, that you could see?
Just a second, please. Watch once again our, what's.
They're, they're different grants. So what we do is, and there's some other columns, I sort to make sure that the revenue total, there's exactly the same number of expenses, so it zeros out. Because on those grants, you can't have more revenue than expenses, they have to handle that. So that's not discretion. So all the white stuff, the white lines, are stuff kind of discretion. We looked at our ISD millage, the enhancement millage. We're showing, we're expecting about $83,000 more this year than we did last year. And we just got that number break for the last board meeting. There's some fixed assets, you know, we sell buses every year, or some other things that make them out of there. We money into the cafeteria to help pay off some of the costs.
But that's why we extend, we charge the food service for indirect costs. So we don't actually bill them for utilities or the time to do payroll or do their budgeting. So we are able to charge an indirect cost for this. So we can calculate the direct cost, use that indirect cost rate, and the food money from the food service fund into the job. And that's that revenue, that's an estimate, we'll do a final.
So when you look at the summary, all of these total, $22,456,650 more. So your next question might be, well, what assumptions did you make on the per pupil? In years past, we have been able to say, okay, all three budgets have this item in it, and we may take the lesser, go down the middle. There are only two items in the budgets that are being discussed that have a commonality of all three. One is the per pupil, which, remember the green bars that Tammy spoke of? You can see on the per pupil, which is your next sheet, I know it might be a little hard to see, but I tried to break this down. In the per pupil, the house budget, if you will go to the right, you can see this line item, which is line seven. You can see the three, the governor's proposal based on enrollment, we get a 7.4 million. The senate, we have 7.5, and the house, we just blew 7.4 million plus in the government. What we built the budget on was the house proposal, the lowest of the two of the three numbers. The other assumption that we know, which is the second sheet that you have, is looking at 31A, which is that response. This dollar value includes carryover as well as current year's allocation. In our initial projection the other day, we have about the same amount of carryover expected next year as we had the previous year. So we built that in, and in the three, on your sheet, it shows it, but on the here, I apologize for Lisa. We've used the governor's number. The governor's number shows an increase in our 31A of about 15,000, just under 16,000. The senate has 82,000, and the house is 47,000. We took the lower of the two, as conservative as possible. So you'll see that increase of 15,000 in our allocation. That is all the known that we have for revenue. The next document you have is several pages. These are all the expense line items. It is every account looking at what the first amendment was, the second. You'll see colors that are yellow, those are grants, so we know we gotta make sure the expenses equal revenue. You will see items that are in blue. That is to make sure where we put staff, if we moved them to elementary or middle school, or we had changes, retirees, et cetera. The red are dollars that are going away, ESSER funding that's going away. I do wanna say in the salaries for teachers, it still contains about 1% that we have with the letter of agreement with them, that goes, falls off next year. So that's, that is built into the cost. It's all the known increases in FICA retirement, our new healthcare rates that we know. All the assumptions are based on everybody has the same plan that they have this year. This budget, that's before, and you can see on the green, light green, you'll see all the supply budgets, et cetera. Again, I just wanna point out, you'll see Renee's curriculum. It's zeroed out here, but if you go to the summary page at the very bottom, you'll see an increase. We basically moved it into the set aside for curriculum. So it's still there in the budget. This is the turf, this is the computer replacement, computer replacement, the buses, et cetera, that we consciously put money aside every year. And we are on track that at the end of the turf field, we have the money in this account to replace it. We're on track that when we need to start replacing the computers, we have the money in the account to replace them, which is a huge step for this district in order to not have to continually ask the community, can you buy us some buses or computers, to be able to structure into the, into the budget. The blue, like I said, are payroll, you'll see the red, which are the ESSER money going away. Pink are just for COVIDs that we had to have some, had some conversations about either changing supply dollars, temp teaching, et cetera, is in here. Supply dollars, all the same as they were when we taught. So pretty much all the requests of increases were there. Again, I know it's a lot of pages, but everything we've talked about over the last, well, since April, the first meeting, is in here in some fashion. You'll see some reductions in Schedule Bs, it's not that we're eliminating any. In the past, we budgeted always on the high end, the step five on the Schedule Bs. We've gotten more accurate of what we're there. As with, as with anything, you wanna make sure you have built in the budget dollars that in case there's a surprise that happens in here. And we've been able to do that. This is a little tighter budget than we've ever had from the perspective of we really had no clue what the state's given us, and we tried to get close to our true expenses. When we approved several contracts, particularly the teachers, this is the bulk of it. The third year of their contract, I shared with the board that this was gonna be a stretch to make it, but in the sake of having peace and harmony and trying to retain teacher, and we went, and I appreciate that because we, we have, we have more teachers on steps than we've ever had in the past, especially those at the top. So those are, those are part of those costs there, too. So these are just all the line items we've been talking about. There's some new things that we've had to add because county rules that we gotta break it up by building where before, we didn't have to do that. But I'll go back to the summary. This, this budget that we would actually approve would say, we'd use about $400,000 out of fund balance. If you look at the numbers at the bottom, I'm gonna go back to the original summary sheet. Even though you're using 400, you're actually still adding money to fund balance until we're done studying. So a lot of, a lot of things that not, weren't spent this year are now gonna become full expenses. This budget has three REA teacher reductions. Not that we're laying off anybody, it's they are being absorbed through the retirements. So this budget currently does not have instructional coaches built in. Once we know what our official grant dollars, that would be my next thing to put back. So otherwise, you would be looking at putting about another $300,000 on top of that, if you wanted to keep them in. My recommendation is at this point, this is the number we use, with the idea, as soon as we know anything, to put those back as soon as possible. Which should probably be in August, I mean, they're, they're probably gonna officially approve something by June. We'll know in July, kind of the impact for Richmond, when we can bring that to you easily. I've had conversations with all the three people individually, and it was, this is our priority. They, they get it, they recognize it. But if you recall, in January, we hired more staff than we did before January. Because we had some long-term positions, so we hired an extra music teacher, we hired an extra science teacher, so that we didn't have just subs in those rooms. We've been able to absorb this in the process so that we have all the teachers. Currently, there is only two positions posted in the teachers. There is a part-time position at the elementary, the middle school, which is English, language arts, and computers. Part of that is because of the courses that we added, the argument and writing. And we have a TC because of, TC resource or because of our retirement tonight. So we add those both.
So are the coaches the only thing that we've taken out that we're looking to put back in?
That's the only thing that we've taken out. And part of it is, I haven't done, in the teacher contract, they don't get their official assignment till seven days after the board approves the budget. In working with the REA, I gave what are called preliminary, to give people here's what we're thinking, so that when they left in the summer, they had an idea. This skill may change, there's some teachers that have some questions about courses on here that, you can see, like, there's a district EL consultant. We don't have anybody supporting our EL students. We have a teacher certified, so we'll be using $30 to $41 to help pay for that. We're looking at revamping your career employment pilot program, one more special, get more career. career-focused into pathways, is where we're trying to get to. This is some co-teaching models, we're still doing that. There's some student advocate in two teachers' schedules. We have student advocate issues, resentment with this two section, to build into what Renee talked about with these positive behaviors support, to build that into the system to help those kids that might need a little mentoring, one-on-one, structure, follow-up.
And then the, sorry, and then the position that you're talking about, that we have the two positions that we have open, are those built into this budget? Okay, so everything's in except for the coaching and this.
And when you look at this sheet, you can see, if you just go to the open, it's alphabetically by last name, you'll see, in the right column, you see a number one, that means it's counted, but it's open right now, that's former teacher. And there's some that have a zero, those are the coaches instructional, that again, and once we finalize whether it's our 31AA or 31A, that would be our first priority. And part of that is because we have so many new teachers, this is an internal support that we can build. This is out of probably my many years here, I think this is the first year that we have very little from the state. Usually, they give out all three budgets, and there's commonality in multiple section. We've got two things that are a commonality, and we just chose the lower of the two like we've done in the past. The one thing I will say, there is a letter that I will be sending out to the families And it basically talks about, there's, since 2012, districts have been, had to pay at public schools, have had to pay a 21% payroll tax to fund state pensions that were underfunded. They are, one of the funds, the retiree health system, is now overfunded. And so what we're asking legislators to do, and it's in that late senate budget, is to help give some of that back to the schools, because they're sending it to us, and we're turning around sending it back. And for Richmond, that would be an additional 682,429 if they, if they just keep it the way it is, and look, just reduce our retirement rate at least by 7%. And so this will ask parents, staff, I have the legislators contacted, Representative Green, Senator Lawrie, Governor Woodburn's office number, to please call, because there is conversation that this dollar, which equates to 700 million dollars in the state of Michigan, which is a one, is being looked at for other ventures.
Of course.
And this is, these are dollars that should be directed towards schools, most of the millions should stay at the school. Like I said, for Richmond, it's 682,000 dollars. That alone would completely wipe this out and put those instructional back in harmony. Plus all the other stuff that you really want to do, but are cautious because there's only so many dollars to work with. So this will go out to staff and parents tomorrow, encouraging them to call, let their voices be heard. It's a lot of money, 700 million, and it's not a tax increase, it's already being sent to the schools, this is just let us now reduce our retirement rate in it permanently, states out of the schools. In a nutshell, that's kind of what it was.
Yes. I have a question.
No, no, all right.
So is seeing that for next year, we're taking out of fund balance, but not really, does that imply that the following year, we're overspending again, because say we get no increase for the '25, '26 school year, we'd be working with the same budget, and we'd be over another 400, so we'd have to take 400 out of fund balance again?
If everything stays the same, that arguably holds true.
And so we'd be looking at 400.
Tammy, what's the percentage of this?
For fund balance?
Yeah.
About 15%.
And there were years that we were hovering at that 5, 5.01, so the state didn't give their business. 15 to 20 is where your orders say, they have enough. We're not a company, don't borrow money to meet payroll, because there's a lot of positives, but, and I'm not saying we continue, but at some point, you're going to have a little structure. We don't have, the teacher contract expires again next year, which is your largest cost. We have the largest group, 96 people, but all your other contracts are settled, with the exception of early childhood, which is still negotiated. So to answer your question, if nothing changes, if we got no increases, if they're flat, that would be a challenge. Now, our class sizes are very good. You could tighten that up to reduce staff, because you're talking about people when you're talking about school. We have some very good classes, we run a lot of intervention programs to keep their loads, so they target and help kids, and you're seeing the effort, and you're seeing the resistance, which is remarkable. But if you had to go down there, it is room to even tighten more in the specials, or in schedule, not special. But you're that picking and choosing classes that kids may not want to take. We've got, I mean, there are districts that look at our course catalog, and we've got a lot of courses that the districts must be not offer. And the seventh period date has helped tremendously, just being able to offer.
It just scares me that already, if we were flatlining, we were 400 over budget for the following school year, and we haven't even gotten through the next spring period yet, so that's just...
I am there with you from that perspective, but what makes me sleep at night for previous years, is there's so many unknowns that are changing, and the money is there, and there's, when you just look at each of the different proposals, they got to come to consensus at some point.
Right, and this would be the extreme, because you use the lower.
We use the lower of everything. I think 15,000 for 31A, and the other was like 80,000, I mean, that's a big difference. And this 600, this 700 million is just one line item in there. Basically, they give us money, turn around and send it, there's no programming for kids for that one. This has the plan of putting, you know, the half-year of the building subs, so we can reevaluate and come on December. Like I said, most of the supply account, this still has some of those supply accounts that maybe charge, if you asked about charging to the bond or someone asked here, when we bring the next, for the next award, we need what our final bond dollars are, some of those expenses could go there, which would then free up dollars here to just short or shrink that.
Do we know rounds out how much we do have left over at this point? I mean, I know it can't be an exact figure, but...
I don't even know, unless you, I don't know a number to even jump up, because I have not been focused in the last two weeks on this one.
I know it's, right now, it's 200,600, but it might be a little bit more than that.
Okay, so it's, at least.
It's not a lot, but it's something.
You feel comfortable building the budget on this, knowing so many uncertainties at this time?
I don't know, I don't know that we have much. I like that we're being conservative about it, obviously. It doesn't feel a little bit better that we have some money left over from the gun stuff. I also agree that it's, it wouldn't be sustainable the way that it is.
Right.
Correct.
And every district, we can hope, because there's usually contract increases built in, there's usually cost, the cost of living increases, there's insurance increases, retirement rate generally throws up, maybe we'll get lucky and go down a bit this year, so it just, there are very many variables that you have to look at each year to try to project the long term, so that we don't...
The other one that we're watching, and see one legislature, is the heart cap. Because if they remove the heart cap, the potential of the district now absorbing that, it would be detrimental to every, and healthcare costs are just skyrocketing. So at least it creates a reasonable, this market is in the right form for single, two person families, but there's got to be some measure of a cap for a district to be able to stay in.
Right. I mean, you're setting aside money in your fund balance, you're setting aside money for the capital projects, so you have money sitting and available to help try to smooth if that were to happen, try to smooth it out for a couple of years, but you definitely have to take attention.
And one more, say, in July.
Well, they're supposed to, by the law, approve the budget by June 30th. There's no consequence that they don't. The Council of the Bees, September 30th, sort of government agencies, they start shutting down, and then they got to come to some, because they technically just want to be done to start the campaign for the fall.
We have some big things to come to agreement on, because the polls are very different in so many areas. Sorry, we have work to do, but they were still optimistic a month ago, saying maybe by the end of June, we're going to have time for a June 24th meeting where we have to approve our budget, but soon thereafter, and that's kind of what we're looking for.
Did let us know.
Oh, soon, you know, with the breakdown of the, whatever it is that would be... So on the next board meeting, at the 6:30, there'll be a 6:30 special meeting for Truth in Taxation, or is that right? So we've got to say, basically, tell the public that this is what we're doing with taxes and everything. And then this will be approved at the next board meeting, with all the family now put this into the budget, and then subsequent, all the contracts that go with it, the annual contracts that we have.
And then we'll have to find one for the 2023 board as well, on that.
And that, just to be, probably that's truly not the final until the audit number comes in October, because there are still bills that come out in the summer to get charged to...
It's our best, yes.
It's our best. All right? Thank you.
Okay, that's it on our agenda, is our committee for our candidates. I would ask Mr. Spire, please stand up, we appreciate it. And then Jessica, you can come forward and have a seat and stuff. Mike, I don't know if Jessica's getting her here, I'm going to pass them this way. I would like to first start off with just introductions, I don't know if you know all of us or not, so, Danielle, if you could start, please.
Danielle.
Sandra, or who not? Debbie.
Kelly.
Debbie.
Margaret. Jessica, we have, I don't know, there's maybe about 10 questions, right? And then we'll give you an opportunity to hand if you have any questions for us. So number one, tell us a bit about yourself, your background experience, and your connection to Richmond schools.
My name is Jessica Moussey, and I am a parent at Richmond Community Schools, I have two children. One is an old freshman, going to ninth grade, and my daughter is going to fifth grade. I moved to Richmond in September 2020, and we're about four, five years old. And I'm involved in the community in different ways, whether that is working at precinct one, as the chair of the precinct pro-actions, but also I do the truly supports teachers and staff, it's a page to bring positivity to the community and to our teachers. I try to support our teachers and their community as much as I can, whether that's through general fundraisers, through getting their wish lists, or just being a voice for them, or bringing the cookies. That's just a little bit in our community. Thank you.
Remember, your initials are next to your questions, please.
Why are you choosing to interview for this opening, and what experience or skills and personal characteristics have prepared you to serve as a board member?
I'm interviewing because right now, we have an opening, and I think that's important to have a full board. Also, because I have been involved in schools, teachers, what gives me the experience, that's on many executive boards, nonprofit boards, but also partisan and nonpartisan. I think it's important to have a cohesive team, because each person makes the full board. Communication is key, but also making sure that you are being supportive of each other, talking, and it's something that I have been doing for quite a few years now. I think I sit on a total of, on my resume, I think it's five boards in McComb County. One of the ones I'm really proud of is McComb, I'm the VP, I'm the chair of the Veterans Armed Services Committee. I've been on that for quite a while, and as a veteran, it's the leadership that you have to have for those boards, and it's something that's not everybody can do, and I commend you guys all for doing that.
I have the next question. What is your knowledge and experience level on, well, I guess, probably, self-explanatory is what you just said, but on board meeting procedures and etiquette?
Well, there's two different things, you have the state law, which helps out Robert's role, Robert's rules, president will run the meetings, in case the president's not here, you have your vice president who will run the meetings, and you follow Robert's rules, you have to quorum, you have the respect for the positions, and as long as you're following to those rules, you're well.
What is a school board member's role and responsibility, and how does it differ from the superintendent's role?
The school board is a function of the school when it comes to like the, how do I say this correctly? The school board does the bylaws and making sure that they're running properly with what the curriculum is to give it to the schools, also approving the budget. And if there's any type of disciplinary stuff that comes to the board, the board has to go through. It's also a check and balance for the superintendent, it's a little bit different, though, in parts that they are removed from the school system, so it's an oversight. Card me for mouth, please.
You were excellent, great.
If you know we have multiple events outside of our board meetings, will you have a time to attend to these events?
Absolutely. It's something that is a part of my hire, I think that our kids' schools should be a priority, and making it a priority is something that every board member should do, because it's our future, and showing them that they are just as important to us is something that we all should make time for.
Sometimes it happens when you're sitting at the table, that a vote happens, and it's a vote that you did not vote, you voted no for something. How do you see yourself handling that if you are in the minority vote on something that passes in support of something like that?
It happens. I think that having one, falling back onto forum, making sure that you're respecting the board, you're not always going to get your way, hopefully you're having a good discussion before you get to a vote, and having communication, but making sure that you're respectful. Falling back on respect is the number one thing. Not everybody's going to agree, but that's where the votes come into play, and you know, you're doing everything for the good of the school and the students and the teachers, then, you know, it's going to, hopefully you're going to be coming to pretty great votes together, but you're not always going to agree. And, you know, it may be, it may feel personal, but it's not personal, it's, should be to apply.
Thank you. I'm sorry, that's a camera. What are some strengths and weaknesses you see currently in our district?
Some strengths, I think that I enjoy seeing a lot of the things the board's been doing recently with standing up against, and standing up against some of the loud voices that are not necessarily speaking from a place of accuracy, but also the stuff that you guys are implementing for the students. I am loving the curriculums that you guys are implementing, my... My son also, just like Verandys loves love of math, I've seen him excel so much in math, and loves it again, where he loved it in elementary school. But also the programs that I'm seeing come into light in middle school, the care that I feel that I'm seeing from the teachers and the principal and vice principal, I'm just seeing a lot different. It's better, I just feel it's a lot better. Can I answer that all?
What's the weakness?
The weakness? Do we have, we don't have?
There's a third.
No weaknesses. I think that, a weakness, I think that you guys have really been solid in, even when there is possibly hard times, I think when, to the face of the public, you guys are doing a great job of not letting anything say. But I know that there's probably conversations being had between you guys on the, like, outside of the board, where it's not always that easy, but you guys are doing a great job. So I don't know if there is a weakness, as far as what I'm seeing, as far as the public.
Thank you for recognizing that.
I know it's not easy, like, it's because of his heart.
Yeah. You couldn't put us in the middle of the room around? Don't jump. Name a major issue. Name one major issue that you believe our school district is currently facing, and how would you like the district to deal with that issue?
I think middle school's hard, and I think we're doing a great job with, like, if you see something, say something. With bullying and stuff like that, I do feel that this is personal. My son is biracial, and he's had a lot of, this past year, like, things that have been said to him that haven't been unaccessed. And I do think that the principal and vice principal have been great at speaking to him and speaking to the students, but I think that the ages that we're dealing with, it's hard to get them to understand certain things. And I think that helping them understand, like, having empathy is hard, but how do you do that? And I don't know how we do that as a district. But bullying, I think there's, it's hard.
So what is, I guess this kind of goes to some question again. What is the area of concern you see regarding our students, and what are your thoughts or ideas?
Yeah, it's kind of the same thing. Middle school's just a hard age, and I think that all the support that you guys have pushed towards the middle school this past year has been great. I do think that possibly having a counselor full-time over in the middle school would be great. I don't know if that's shifting. Having more support there in different ways. I know that things are coming, and I know that over time those things just evolve, the more services that are available, but I think that these kids are far more advanced than what we were, and have more things available at them, that's a bigger job.
Ms. Shat, as a, as a follow-up, so do you think then, that at the middle school level, because your son's going into ninth grade, do you, do you think there has been improvement with the change in leadership in that building?
Yes.
In the last year, that that's a, that's a different vibe?
Substantially different. I feel that there's a difference in like the emotional, like, there's a focus on the emotional wellbeing, and it's not just focused on sports, it's not just focused on the kids that, it's focused on all the kids. And we came into the, like, we did virtual first, and then, so our, our experience was a little bit different, but you know, it, I do see a difference, and even how, you know, my daughter's first year was this year, in the middle school, and it's just, there's, they just seem happier. I don't, I don't know else to explain that, but I do feel that the vice principal, being a student's a principal, their experience from the other schools, we needed it for this age, so middle school.
What are your thoughts on the current, the proposed budget for the school district, and how would you determine your budget priorities as a board member? Now that you took a crash course here.
Well, I have a little bit of experience, because I do help with the governor's budget on our nonprofit stuff, so our focus is K-12, like, making sure that we stick with that funding, so it is something that I am familiar with.
Really?
Yeah, with my ass. So, repeat your question one more time.
The question was, what are your, what are your thoughts on our current or proposed budget, and our, you know, what do you know about it? And then, as a board member, what would be, how would you set your priorities?
I think that the way Mr. Wonsley has come into it with focusing on the lower end of, you know, what they're proposing for the budget is smart, it's strategic in doing that, and also focusing on, you know, making sure that you're paying attention to the grants not being there, and knowing what your bottom line is, because it can be a surprise going into it, and knowing that you have a deadline at the 30th, and I think it is always a frustrating thing going into these budgets, because you're always, they're waiting to the last minute, every single time. They know every year they have to do this, they always wanna fight. The good thing is, is it's a tricep, so hopefully it'll be a little bit easier, but you know, it's, it's frustrating, and I know that it's frustrating for all of you guys to be waiting until the last minute, but I do feel that he, with focusing on the least amount that you could possibly get, so if we do get the higher end, then it's a win, and you're, you're looking at a positive bonus.
It is. You're like, oh wait. No, it is, because that's what we've done the last however many years, we've all, we've tried to go with that lower end, because it's very scary.
It is.
You know, when you're planning a budget with people that can't figure out how to give us the money versus.
Right, and then you have people who are retiring, so you're having to focus on, you know, subs, and you're, the unpredictable is always gonna be there, and you know, I know you guys are changed, like, you've, you've added steps for the newer hires, and I know those are things that are, they're always in conversation, and that's, that's money. So I, I enjoy that part of it, so.
To stay on the board, you will need to be elected as a member, as a member's election. Are you going to climb to the position?
Yes. Are you working on?
Your last question, continue. Yeah, that comes out, the last one. Okay. Okay, that's okay. Well, let Margaret refer. We have to remember that if we throw in any questions here, you gotta make sure you gotta ask the other candidate the same question, unless it's, it's kind of like a follow-up to something you said.
Okay, good, okay. Margaret, go first, please.
This is rather lengthy. A school board member plays a crucial role in promoting the district by serving as a bridge between schools and community. Their advocacy helps garner community support, which is vital for securing funding, improving facilities, and enhancing educational programs. By effectively communicating the district's successes, school board members can attract new students and retain current ones, fostering a positive reputation. Additionally, their promotion efforts can lead to partnerships with local businesses and organizations, enriching students' educational experiences, and providing additional resources. Ultimately, a school board member's promotion of the district ensures a thriving educational environment that benefits students, teachers, and the community at large. As a parent and community member, how are you advocating for, or have been promoting, or will promote our district? If you.
Great question. One, my children go to school here, so having my kids in the district's important, and they're selling the curriculum, but also speaking highly about our district and the community. I have gotten a couple of my friends to transfer out here, and I'm trying to convince one to leave our neighborhood. I'm trying. She lives in my neighborhood, but I think that it's just about talking about the great things that the district's doing. It's not that hard when we speak on facts. With, with the numbers that we heard today, with how we're doing in the county, with, compared to other schools, it's, it's not that hard to do, when you just look at our improvement. But also with talking about the True Blue's sports teachers and staff elevating the great things that our district does, I have talked about it in the press a couple times about our school district. I represent, anytime I'm out, when people like do Google my name, I say, my kids are Richmond Community Schools, I speak very highly of our district, and all this love.
And just follow to what you said, your, the True Blue Facebook page. You created that to generate or garner some positivity?
It was during the time when, unfortunately, we had the, the stuff here, and it was, we needed it. We needed the light in our district, and we still do, we always will. And I do have plans if I am appointed, I have somebody that will take over the page, because I do feel it is a conflict of interest, and it would be one of the people who does the, will be page, so she would be great for it. She brings a lot of joy to the district.
So that answered my question, I was just saying, sorry that you run the True Blue page, everything, and we try to kind of keep a low profile as far as, you know, online stuff goes, so I was just wondering if you had any plans, but you already answered that, so. Any other questions? I remember you asked one at this point, you gotta ask the next. Okay. My last question for you, is do you have any questions for us?
Other than will you guys decide tonight, or, sorry? No? I don't, thank you guys for your time.
And thank you for your time, and getting us your permission to.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Okay. Yes, go. We have, we have one person taking a bathroom break, so have a seat. We'll get started here in a minute. Thank you for being patient with us.
No worries, no worries.
Were you seeing your history? Did you attend to the stuff this weekend?
So I had, on Saturday, I had to go perform some military honors up in Palazzo, and so we had the first sergeants that were working in the mid-starter tent, and kind of working around, so that's one group, and then our medical unit, part of, we're starting four, they also had a boot set on through the weekend, but military's taking out three of my weekends this month. So I, well, spending some time home.
Yes.
It could be a long day.
You could hear some of it over here, too. We were on the trail yesterday, and we had four of them fly over us, so we got it over here, too.
When I got back, you know, the detail on Saturday, it took me an hour to kind of get into the front gate, and then once I saw the double lines of traffic, I'm like, oh my God, I just wanna get out. And so one of the, the security guards is like, oh, if I'd known it was you, I'd have told you to go around, use a subgate. And that's just what I did, and I got there sooner by going around the base, becoming as soon as I would have just waited a while. But, that's.
We're just sacred, everything. Okay. We're gonna get started. First off, I'd like to just, we're gonna introduce ourselves, because I don't know if you know everybody, so Danielle, do you want to start?
I'm Danielle Sudden.
Sandra, fourth name.
Debbie McShaw.
Kelly O'Donoghue.
Kansas.
Margaret. We have a lot of questions here we'd like to ask you, and at the end, we give you an opportunity to ask us questions.
Sure.
Okay. So first one, just tell us a bit about yourself, your background, your experience, and how you're connected to Richmond Schools.
Where's the, all right, so a little bit about myself is I'm originally from New Haven, I spoke in New Haven, I'm the youngest of four children, I live on a small, small farm on 29 Mile, I've got a lot of family, my mom's able to send girls, and yeah, a lot of it, used to be homeless family there, I have grandparents on 28 Mile, and it's got the Gravely's Green Houses on 28, well, yeah. But so, directly after high school, I enlisted in the active duty army, where, you know, I graduated from basic training in Airborne School, March of 96, I was stationed in Fort Mar, Virginia, as a member of the 36th Infantry, the Honor Guard, that's worked with the president. After a couple of enlistments in the active duty army, I got out to kind of, for again, my, my marriage, just within the first couple of years, I got married, had a couple of kids, started life early, which was by design, not for this. But, so I, I got off the active duty, and then I returned home to Michigan over the next several years, then college, towards a few different construction-related jobs, and hopefully settled into a security job at Southern Air Base. And I moved to Richmond, I think it was about 2003 officially, when I, when I got back to one of my deployments, so I've been a Richmond resident for a little over twenty years, twenty-one-ish years. Unfortunately, since that time, my first marriage didn't work out, but was blessed to have two daughters with that marriage, remarried again in 2009, and 2014 was blessed with another daughter. Three. All my daughters have attended Richmond Schools, and has been enrolled here. My oldest two daughters have long since grown up and moved away. In fact, I've got a three-year-old grandson with grandchild number two on the way next month sometime, so definitely looking forward to that. And then my youngest daughter, will be at fifth grade, this coming year. So with that, it kind of gives me a personal vested interest in ensuring that the students, you know, they select a position, ensuring that the students are in the Richmond School. District receives less education, that was here, that promotes learning that may be available to them. So definitely a person who holds in my mind. So since, since joining the army after high school in 1995, I maintain my military service. However, I transitioned from the active duty army to the army guard, and then ultimately to the air guard. And I joined the, the air guard in 2012, because in 2011 I was facing another deployment with the army, and literally the same week that my lawyer come to me and said, hey, it looks like you're gonna custody your kids, I read the sent you over the unit and said, hey, you need to extend your contract, if you don't extend your contract, you're not gonna be allowed to remain unless you get out. And you know, military's only a twenty-year retirement, and at that time it would have looked at just under seventeen years, and would have been forced out. But ultimately, I chose family over service at that point, and pursued and, you know, awarded housing with kids. So it's, it's a win in my mind. Since, since I've been on active duty status with the Air National Guard since 2017 now, where I was deployed to police, I'm returning from the deployment, I applied for, I was selected for a recruiting position with the Air National Guard, I did that for a number of years, in fact, I used to do lunchroom visits in the, in the lunchroom as a recruiter here for a few years. And then after a few short years of being on recruiting, I was then selected as the 127th Division Base on Air Program Managers, which is my current full-time position now. And so it's, it's kind of been a nutshell, kind of my background, and what I'd also like to share with you is, it's kind of the reason, perhaps it's a question, or a coming question, but the reason why I applied for the position, is that I previously mentioned, you know, I've lived in Richmond for over twenty years, my three my daughters have attended Richmond Schools. Over the last few years, there's been a lot of big social changes, to say the least, that's been going on just in the world, and then a lot of, you know, policies and changes in the school district, things that I never, as a child, would have ever imagined that we'd be facing today. And so that's, it's kind of a big deal. So the diversity and inclusion of our children, our students, and our community in general has never been more important than it is right now, and I want to be part of that solution. Things that I never, as a child, would have ever imagined that we'd be facing today. And so that's, it's kind of a big deal. So the diversity and inclusion of our children, our students, and our community in general has never been more important than it is right now. And I want to be part of that solution for the issues that we're facing now and for the issues that we're going to face in the future. I want to have a more active role in that, especially in my honor guard. And currently, the board doesn't have any, any dads. I'm, I'm on the board and I, I want to be that, that face, I want to be that voice. I think we're going to have a very diverse board that's, you know, I want to have, I want to be a dad and be representative of the other dads that have seen, they have a voice in a different outlook, you know? Different perspective on things. And I think that's important. And, and my schedule has changed in, in this life school to where that now allows me to do that, to put that, that time investment in to where I can, I can focus on that and be a proactive member and really hopefully affect change in a positive way. In closing, a few additional things to know about me is, as you can see, I'm serving service oriented, family focused. Those things are very important for a lot of my country. I've been in the service now, had an opportunity to put my resume and my bio there. Got over, well, this year, next, see, the twenty-second of this month, we went twenty-nine year anniversary since our anniversary. And I, I still think I've been many more years ago. So that's, that's really important. I want to still have that, that appreciation. And also, you know, so I'm, I'm a look you in the eye, shake your hand guy. You know, it's, it's an obvious, I, I make measured responses to situations. You know, I'm not a knee-jerk reaction kind of guy. I find that people would sit back and listen and kind of soak it in, what's going on, usually have a better reaction. When I was younger, there was times where I overreacted. And I felt really stupid for overreacting to something that was like, mm, yeah, that was probably not the thing. So with age comes wisdom, so I like to exercise that. And then just having a passion for, for helping. Also want to add that some of my professional memberships and associations, I'm a lifetime member of the local PFW Year, forty-sixth year, the Eastbound Road, handling for almost ten years now. The treasurer of the one twenty-seventh Diversity Council at the wing. I'm also a member of the one twenty-seventh, first sergeant council and a member of the one twenty-seventh Top Three Council. So Top Three is, it's the top three of the enlisted act, so the major horses, chief military sergeant, senior sergeant, and master sergeant. I would say council, but it's kind of peer organization where you assist other members and you kind of learn the difference between coaching someone and mentoring someone, which I never knew that there was a difference, but I've earned some education and I found that there actually is a great distinction of this difference. And I'd like to take all those skill sets and apply them here. Also just want to thank you for the opportunity to be sitting here and to be here with you and so, I want to thank you all very much for just taking the time to attend.
Danielle, if I could, go, excuse me. You said your, is your fifth grade daughter, does she go to Richmond?
She, she was. Last year, we decided to homeschool her.
So the, so then your interest, if you pulled her out of Richmond Schools, where, where is your interest in Richmond Schools if you don't have your daughter attending?
Well, because I'm a still resident and I still care about the people and the students in the community. And I, obviously I care about my daughter, I want to, I want to be able to bring her back in.
And then you, you said something to the effect that, forgive me, because I didn't move, didn't know where you're done, but if I say it wrong, correct?
Sure.
There are changes that are happening in the world, changes you didn't think, you know, we all don't, we all didn't know as kids what the world would be. But what exactly did that mean, the changes that you're seeing happening and what your, what your role on the board is for that? Am I asking that right, Diz? You said something about there's changes.
Right. Social, a lot of social changes throughout the world, right? And, and some of those impact our level here as a community, the school. And I mean, social changes so far as, you know, was it two years ago when they were bringing statues down? It's historical monuments, the things that I, I never would have thought that would have ever been thanked.
Right, but what, how about changes that are affecting Richmond Schools? On the students, the students in our community, our district?
So, so are you asking me what are the changes that?
No, I meant you, your statement was that there are changes that are happening, so coming to secure the board. So what, what kind of issues or changes that were happening here in Richmond Schools that sparked your interest to be on the board?
Well, it wasn't necessarily the issues that have been coming up that sparked my issues, like the new issues. That, that's, that's not necessarily what has sparked my interest. Back when my, my older two daughters attended Richmond, and that was ten-ish years ago, I was younger and frankly didn't have as much care of concern to be involved in the school district. And now as I grow older and look sort of hopefully a little wiser and a little more emotionally mature, I, I now have more interest in these subjects and especially with having a young daughter still so young to go to attend school. Does that?
No, I, I was, I guess I was just looking for you to give me an example. You have, so that, that's, we can move on.
Well, I'd like to answer your question.
Okay. I believe he did, though, kind of with the social, he meant, so he said social a few times. And he did mention the social changes, but the, you were saying, well, tearing things down, but originally he said social changes. I don't know if that's where he was going with it, but.
Yeah, well, like I said, it was, it was, guys, the social changes, like I said, the example would have been, you know, where it was a thing to start carrying on statues, kind of erasing history kind of thing and.
Not good, I get that totally, but we didn't have statues toward them originally. I was just, I was just looking to see if you, that there was something specific, because everybody, every one of us, at some point when we go to get to be on the board, there's some issue that makes you interested or wanting your voice to be there. That's kind of the direction that I was trying to get from you.
For me, it wasn't, again, the interest in, in joining the board, it wasn't for any one specific item. It's, it's, and I, I don't mean to leave the channel, but it wasn't one specific thing. It's, it's a climate, like it. I, I don't, there's, because there's several different things that.
It's really okay to say it's not, it's not specific. It really is okay to say, "I'm not here because of one specific." That's, that's, yeah, that's, that's absolutely right. Yes.
I believe, guys, Kelly's answered. Kelly's question. I mean, I know when I took notes, you answered it in your thing. So Danielle, we're going to jump to you.
All right. What is your knowledge and experience level in board meeting procedures and etiquette? I know you answered that kind of in your email that we received that you submitted from us in shot, but board meeting procedures and etiquette.
So having been part of several different councils on the base, there is like a hierarchy, right? There's officers within the board, the council, there's a procedure, kind of like the opening remarks and, and saying, "Okay, we have an agenda for this." And so I, I understand how the process works. And, and I've been to a few board meetings here specifically in the past to kind of observe and kind of get an idea of how it runs. Is that, is your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. What's school board, what's, I'm sorry, what is a school board member's role and responsibility versus what the role, or how does it differ from superintendent's role?
So the one I gather, the school board's role is, is sort of, to paraphrase, addresses issues district-wide, right? And creates curriculum. And as it was like earlier with the history teacher saying, "Hey, this is my proposal." The board kind of takes that in, evaluates it, discusses it, and votes on it, and then sets that as the new policy, you know? And so it's, the board's role to do things like that, so far as also the district hiring, the budget, as, as Mr. Wongzey was discussing. I was looking at that, listening to that, and there's a few times that's true. But, um, but yeah, so discussing the budget. And so Mr. Wongzey, as the superintendent, is saying, "Hey, these are the numbers that I come up with. This is what I'm working on." And he's proposing it to the board to kind of pick it apart, ask you questions, and, and ask you a couple of things, because ultimately you guys will be discussing it and voting. And so that's your piece of the board. And, you know, and, and Mr. Wongzey is, is the superintendent, kind of responsible for overseeing the day-to-day operations of the, the district. And kind of overseeing that and then implements and sets the policies set forth by the board, what you, that's my understanding.
As you know, we have multiple events outside of our board meetings, so you have time to attend to that.
Likely, depending on what those are, because I guess my schedule, my work schedule is really flexible. So it's, it's probably likely thing. And then I live literally a mile down the road from here, so it's not that far.
There are times when a vote happens and you can be in the minority, a vote passes and we could be the, the no vote. When that happens, how do you handle if something you did not vote in favor of goes into place? How do you react? How do you deal with that? How do you, as a board member?
Well, sometimes it's just like cards in a pool. And so that's, so my experience in the military is, yeah, you can put me in a boat. And if you don't get it, well, then you just understand it. That's, that's the democracy of things. That's, that's just the way the cards fall. And if it's something that, you know, maybe you could sit back and reflect, maybe I could have potentially influenced change a different way or proposed something in a different manner and, but, but ultimately, well, that's, we're here as a board, the majority votes. I'm not going to go and pick, uh, it's just, it's an understanding that's going to happen, it does happen.
Okay. What are some of the strengths and weaknesses that you see in our district currently?
Uh, well, some of the weaknesses that I've seen, heard of, observed, would be the, the transparency of the board. And, and I see the weakness is just because there's a lot of controversy regarding that that I've been with. I did hear that, that Candace, that you came up with a program so far as the community answering or asking questions, or was it a?
We developed a, a just ask?
Yes, yes, that's, yes.
I'm the one that brought that.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
It's fine, but I, I did.
Okay. Well, I, I hear that that's, that's making.
It's huge.
Positive things, that's, so that's something I did hear that is, is working forward and seems to be important and all. But one thing I can say is, is definitely a plus is that the heart of this community, like the passion that the parents in the community and that they have, you know, going to the football meetings, going to the, you know, the wrestling meetings and just seeing that heart and that passion. I love it, I love it, I really, sincerely. And that's, that's one thing that is definitely a positive that I see sincerely. And just when, at, at Halloween, you know, all the, even the shops, you know, they, they get their sponsored bales of hay or straw, whatever they got, and all the different businesses and just a small town feel that heart and just the Christmas parties and good old days parties, you know, that's, I love it, so.
Name one major issue that you believe our school district is currently facing. How would you like the district to deal with that issue?
I, I would, I would go back to the saying with, with the transparency and the image that some of the parents have with the board. But I, I think it's, it's being worked, at least from my perspective, because I'm, I'm obviously I'm not on that side of the table yet, so I don't have a, a full view of, of all the things that are maybe impacting, because most people kind of keep their stuff in their own house and try not to put the bad stuff out there. But that seems to be improving and we're getting better from my.
I'm back, so give me one second. All right. So then Kelly's question was for the district as a whole, is there an area of concern you see with our students and what might be your thoughts and ideas on how to provide support to staff or solutions?
I don't know that it's a current issue of the academics. I'm just sitting in this, this meeting earlier and listening to the lady talk about the various, various concerns and how everything has kind of improved in several different areas. It doesn't sound like academics is as much an issue as it used to be. But to, but have, to have my finger on the pulse, you know, on that, of the increase, I'll be honest, I, I don't know. But just, was just from her briefing there that, that seemed like, you know, the thoughts that I've had in previously were kind of, huh, actually, it's pretty good.
I, I get the same train as I myself, so.
It's been steadily happening with members.
Yeah, well, it, right.
Just a little overnight, yeah.
Yeah, without a doubt.
What are your thoughts on our current and proposed budget for the school district? And how would you determine your budget priorities if you sat on board?
So having some budget experience, I would say, I, I couldn't, I couldn't say, I mean, other than what Mr. Wongzey just gave out today, the proposed budget. I know that when it comes to the federal and state dollars, and again, I obviously go back to the military, there's different pots of money. And there's different types of income, different types of monies, this money, you can spend this type of stuff, this money, this type of stuff. And you've got a slush fund, so to speak, you've got this fund, there's different funds. And so based off just that snapshot of what I saw today, the proposed, I couldn't intelligently speak on any of that, of that budget, because that's, I drank it from a fire post, you know, on that particular, because that's my first introduction to that. So that's kind of like, oh, wow. But I, again, I, I, on a much smaller scale, I've, I've worked out budgets for, as the honor guard program manager, I've presented a, a fiscal year budget every year and then try to break that down in quarters. What are, what are your proposals? What do you need? And I have to assess and project numbers that I don't even know. Much like you said, we don't, we don't have definitive answers yet. Well, based off of prior trends and history, I look back and I say, "Well, historically, here's my historical." I got a folder that I keep all my records in and say, "Well, historically, over the last couple of years, this is what we spent, this is what we spent it up, this is what we're projecting may come in the future." And then you have to do your inflation, you have to do other factors, you have to put it together to really come up with a complete plan. And some of it is, is a swag or scientific pile of gifts. And you just do the best you can with what you get. But, but yeah, just knowing that there are different pots of money, there's times tables. But I do have some experience in managing that.
To stay on the board, you would need to be elected a new member. You willing to run?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I put a lot, you know, I, I considered running back in two thousand and twenty-two, but at the time, that's when I was just getting into, like, fully getting ready into my new job and I didn't want to overextend myself. And that's, that's another thing I learned in ages. Don't put your irons in too many patters. Don't put your irons in too many waters. Just focus on certain things and, and master that then move on. So, I wasn't ready with that previously. Now I could, I could, anyways.
Last question. This is kind of long. Yeah, so bear with me. A school board member plays a crucial role in promoting the district by serving as a bridge between schools and the community. Their advocacy helps garner community support, which is vital for securing funding, improving facilities, and enhancing educational programs. By effectively communicating the district's successes, school board members can attract new students who retain current ones, fostering a positive reputation. Additionally, their promotion efforts can lead to partnerships with local businesses and organizations, enriching students' educational experiences and providing additional resources. Ultimately, a school board member's promotion of the district ensures a thriving educational environment that benefits students, teachers, and the community at large. As a parent and community member, how are you advocating for or promoting our district?
Currently or projected? What am I doing?
What are you doing right now as a parent and community member to advocate for or promote our district?
At this point, I honestly haven't been doing much because I've been focusing on, on other areas, focusing on my job and whatnot. I do have experience in doing that and I do understand and actually know that the, the importance of building relationships and networking. That's one of the things I, as, as a recruiter, that was one of the things I was like. If you don't create those bonds and those relationships outside of your own organization, you're going to fall. Um, and then you're not good doing it good. Additionally, with my first article position, one, one of the things that I do is I provide resources for the, within the unit. And I build those, and they're not on the military. I have to go outside and find some other resources as well and do the networking. And, and to promote what we have to offer and then provide that benefit and, you know, to the environment. And so that, I'm always, no, no one's noticed. You know, I've had issues. Hey, because of those, I've got that. And, um, but, you know, so I know that in order to, to promote and, and like you said, draw in students for the, the, the school district, you do have to throw out those pots and things. And that can be done by word of mouth, which is sometimes the best way of advertising, it's word of mouth. Social media, as, as much as it can be, I think it's also can be a positive thing if you try. So, but to, to say what I've been doing up to more recently, kind of what I've been like, but I do know how to and certainly do this.
Thank you. So just a match, I guess, question. And you just mentioned to social media. Is there, like, we try as a board to keep a little bit of a low profile on social media because things can get misinterpreted and whatnot. And I don't know if you are, I guess, big on social media. I don't know how it's the word, so it's the same as her question, I'm trying, because she imagined having, I love that. Yeah, so I don't know if you have, like, are you
Active on social?
Active on social media? Do you, you know, talk about the district on social media? If so, how would that change?
That's, that's okay.
Yeah, so I, I've got an Instagram account and I have a Facebook account. And well, I've got, let's see, I've got my, my military, sorry, Ranger Sire account, but I figured when I was improving that I would take that and I would, um, like, share 127th meeting events, like the Hira show or the different diversity events or, and I share that on that professional page because it's part of the, like, just as I would do as a board, you know, celebrate our successes. You know, if I were to be a board member, celebrate our successes, let's talk about it, you know, let's, let's put it out there. Like you said, let's get more membership for the, for the school district. Let's build up our community and, you know, and project that. So that's something I'm, I'm used to doing. And then I also have a dismal personal account, which most of that is around hunting. Because I was part of the hunting industry for a while, represented various different companies and products and so on. I would advertise our products and children use and things of that nature. But I really, beyond that, I just sort of write and write myself. Personally, I really don't say much politically or anything, maybe, um, I don't want to make sense. I just sort of, uh, social media, in regards to that. And then I also have a Facebook page, it's Old Adventures of Croc, which is actually, kind of all the social media accounts I have. So that's a story of, when I ran my, my Air Force Corps in 2017, my, my youngest daughter was three and a half. As I'm packing up my stuff and the kids, she hands me, she's like, Dad, I got something for you. Okay, what? And so she goes to a room and she brings with this little stuff, yeah, croc, little ale, croc, I don't know. And which is her favorite, croc. She hands it to me and I was like, oh, thanks, huh? And just kind of set it up and stuff. And depending on myself, she's like, no, no, no. Thanks. And I went, what is this? She says, well, hey, well, this is when you go and you go and you're part of it, you miss it. You can hunt crocs like I would be. So I had that. It's hard to travel in the air since.
Hello? Anybody else? Okay. So our last question
Yes.
is do you have any questions for us that you would like some answers to?
This would be if anybody that would want to answer, walk with something that once you got onto the board, you experienced that you really never dodged.
I can say, and I don't know if you know my background, but I was the high school principal here and I retired and stayed out of the community for a couple of years and then I got that number one. I realize, first off, that there is two sides to every story. And that a lot of what is out there in the public isn't always accurate or true. And I guess frustration I would say publicly is that people don't, they put it out there on social media but never come to us and ask specifically or talk with Mr. Wong. And, um, I, I, I guess I would never, never knew or never felt, I always was one sided. Now I know that there's always another side. And I didn't know that.
Well, I will share with you that way, way back, many years ago, when I first was elected to the board, um, our teachers' union went on strike and we had a parent in the district who sued the school district for the teachers going on strike. And we were the entire Board of Education and the teachers' union negotiating leaders. We were locked in the courthouse in Mount Clemens for about 30 hours and we could not leave until we settled that contract and that lawsuit could drop. So that's something, when I ran the very first time, never ever thought that that would happen. And the experience of that is wondering what did I get myself into? True. That's a close already. Yes, yes. I was a very, that was 1991, a very long time ago.
We haven't had to do that. I would honestly say that the people who, who, who you thought were behind you and all on the same side, and then the moment that you go from sitting at that table to this table, that totally just turned their back or, um, whatever it is, what it is.
So the dynamic changed?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think a lot of times getting on board means truth seeking. I wanted to find truth to some things that maybe I didn't know or, so when coming on this side of it and really understanding how it works, coming from the medical background that I have, I wasn't involved in the education system and/or, um, unions. I'm an employee, employee. So I, that was all very interesting to me. And you understand that different dynamic a little bit, that almost also plays a role to understanding a little bit more of what this backside, this is about. So there was a lot of that that
So it's more highly
Between seeking in that area, for me, I learned just the dynamic of what, what, how this all works a little more so.
So for me, like, my idea of what a board representative does, what our role is, was not what it is. I mean, for, for an example, you mentioned the hiring of the district. We don't do that as a board. We only hire the superintendent and he runs the district. Now, um, you know what I'm saying? So like, just little things like that, and that's, you know what I mean, just a small example, like, um, just so many, so many of those small things, though. And I actually would, would, would also say I realize exactly how transparent the board is comparatively. Um, but I think we've worked on that piece, the transparency, at least I know since I've been on the board. And, and I, I was on the board before that and I still, but, but I'm just saying, like, you know, um, we obviously can't share some sensitive information and things like that. So, but anyways, it's, uh, just the role, the difference into what I thought the role was going to be and like, what it is.
Yeah, different gear, you're commenting their budget future. Animals put that on the resume, I guess, having a security notice. And then talk to that point saying, I understand that there's people that have teeth, you know? You know, and, and I understand how that works. So if, if you guys can feel that I'm a proper candidate, I, I understand it, you know? It's not like if there's a board meeting, a bunch of subjects that go on, I can't just go down like, oh, I can't let you in. I understand there's, you know?
Yeah, there's competition.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
And mine, kind of, this would be, it's my kind of opinion, but I've got Candace and also Sandy. Candace doesn't have the experience of being in the education field, but I've been in education. This, I just finished my 17th year. So as a teacher in the high school and so, but then also Sandy's aspect of you don't know what you don't know or these little things that you had misconceptions of. I've always been in education, I graduated 2006 and have been a teacher since 2006. But I, there's still things that I've learned in the last four years, because I came out in 2020. There's still things I've learned in the last four years that, you know, I had already been doing it for 14 years at that point and I still didn't know what I didn't know, you know? And the little things, you know, like Sandy said, there's so many little dotted i's and cross t's that are, you know, different, so.
And you understand, I think, why they're there after being here for a bit, but
Is your prediction?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 you said a little bit of the why.
The rationale.
Why? Appreciate it. Because, you know, I want to know that there's, there's downsides, potential downsides and what those look like. I think it will assess my, you know, just going into thinking, I've got, I know this, this and this one. Actually. About that.
He's got me a lot of that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I have a pleading question and I lost it. Maybe one of those is because I walk in.
Ah, shocks.
But, um, no, I guess I'll just have to take a hard pass and just go with what we're at. Again, appreciate your, your time, your insight. And just allowing me to be here for this opportunity. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
And I guess with one alibi, uh, so what is the process?
We will actually discuss now.
Okay.
I will have a board member make a motion on who they think. And we'll go through that process and then there's a discussion and then we'll vote. If we don't have a majority, we, well, then I would need to get another motion from the board on the other candidate and we will go through the same process. Time to whatever, it will get reposted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so you guys just heard. What? Okay, so, um, we discussed now or then? We can discuss now. Yep, now, this is working on the, because there's not a, not a, I don't have an actual rule right now, so. Anyone want to share any thoughts in their board or concerns or positives? I did like a comment Jessica made. We were talking about decision making. And she said, we need to make decisions that are good for the school and teachers and our students. And it's not personal. And I think, most of you know me from where I stand, I believe that's what we're supposed to be doing here is what's good for our students. I felt she said that. That's just one positive that I think another positive, I like the word she used when we asked about the school board members' role and responsibility and oversight. It's true, we don't run the school district. Her positivity, her being, um, true blue, whenever that pan, because that's what she said, the main one, the pan choice. She formed that at a time when things were, where she was really out of control and crappy. And did it to foster and to put out positivity towards our district, our teachers, or everybody in the district. And continues to do it. I do like that she talks about she started planning on running. Already in the process.
Process, yeah.
I believe she comes across as an excellent candidate. And the bottom line for me is her kids attend Richmond schools. And it's not just being on this board by being a resident of the district. No, that's qualifications, 18 years old, registered about, um, live in the district. However, however it's worth it, I believe it's more than that. I believe your children have to attend here. And, you know, Mr. Steyer, they pulled their child. And I think we all know the negativity that came from, um, that and websites. And I appreciate that, um, he can't be held responsible for what his spouse does. Because I'm a big believer in that. But if you, if you want to sit on the board of education, I believe your child should at least attend Richmond schools. You shouldn't pull him out, you shouldn't badmouth the district when you pull your kid out. And I want to turn around and give some
He didn't badmouth.
Or do we know that?
I did, I did say, but I know, I know a conversation that was had. And I'm not going to go into personal stuff, but I, I firsthand heard of a conversation, but I said he had a conversation. I'll feel specifically correct.
I like both of their responses, kind of, the question, would you support a board decision? We did not vote in favor. I like both of their responses actually, um, in the way of saying good discussion. Having a good discussion, um, if you're expressing and you're having a good discussion, then that's your way Having a good discussion, if you're expressing and you're having a good discussion, then that's your way of, you know, with your words, giving them out, and you have to accept whatever, or keep talking, or, you know. I liked that they were, they recognized that you might have to do anything in your will, but keep trying to say things. Different ways to get other members to understand. I like, I think both of them actually said that.
I think their answer was different from that. They both stated that, that that.
Well, they both said, they both did end up saying, and that's just how those.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what the decision is, you walk away from the table, they both said. Yeah.
Well, he has a lot of experience with that, especially being in the military for as long as he has. But then, you know, sometimes there is no discussion whether you like it or not. If something comes down, you figure out a way to deal with it and you move on, and you don't throw a hissy fit. That's, you know, I think, I think his decades, really, not years, decades of military experience. I think that would stand for a lot in my own personal opinion, just because he has been in so many different positions. Obviously, starting from the ground where you have to learn how to take orders, but then moving his way up and, you know, being a recruiter and, you know, leading the squad and all this different stuff that he's done. I think that's, you know, budgeting, managing, I mean, that's all right there. Just, I think that would be.
Helpful?
Or not helpful.
I would have liked getting them the other perspective.
I like that. Yeah, I think after Kyle and whoever the other guy was, I think that's kind of. No, I know, but missing a little bit of having, you know, counterpart.
Not that you don't count Ryan, but.
He doesn't. I guess that's so interesting too, because when he said that, male perspective, I kind of took a little. And I think, right, I don't need male person, and I don't understand how the male perspective is.
I think the dad is.
Not that it's different.
I think the dad's brain is very, very good. I mean, I guess, I've always worked in male profession, so I've always been the opposite person. You know, giving a different perspective and they're like, oh, don't think of it that way. So I see that as being, we may all see something one thing, and he looks at it a totally different way. That's just how guys and girls' brains work differently. So I think that's.
I think we do that at this table all the time.
I think so too.
I do.
I get that.
I did like, definitely, I felt knew the role of a board member versus the superintendent. It's one of his, you know, Ryan's jobs for the day to day, you know, working, you know, handling the buildings. And we talked about budgeting, regular and things like that in our roles. I feel like he knew there is a difference.
Well, I, so what I have here in my notes is that, so Jessica, when we asked the question, what are some positives and some weaknesses in our district? She went right to positives and he went right to weaknesses.
But I feel, okay, I see what you're saying. I think that is the complete opposite. Excuse me, he had the walls to tell us what he thought his weaknesses were, where she said, oh, I don't know any weaknesses. And to me, that's kind of like, I'm not going to tell you.
I don't think she said we had bullying.
She said.
She did have bullying here.
Couldn't give one, is what I wrote down. I mean, bullying was the next one down.
Same question.
Oh, got it up there.
And then I also, I also really like the fact that she had, I felt, a better idea of what the board's role is versus what the superintendent's role was. And she had a better idea in regards to the budget.
I didn't, I didn't think. I felt he had a better on that question. I felt he gave a better, I'm looking at my notes.
I know his, his, what do you want to call it? His resume here focuses mostly on his military experience, because that's where he's been for, you know, 28 years and stuff. But I'm kind of concerned that hers focuses mostly on a very one-sided.
What is that?
One, I'm still forming my thought. One side of the political spectrum is very drawn to one side. And that brings up a concern as far as, you know, I know non partisan that we need to be here. It just, there's, it's very narrow. Her, her whole thing is very narrow in my, my opinion. And his isn't, no, I started with that. I said, I know his is focused because he spent his entire life in the military. So I know his is that way. That's how I started the whole thing. But I see hers as being very, but still, still very.
I think they're both on these, all these boards and stuff.
Focused on, on the one side, not, not varying so much. That's my.
Yeah, I feel like they're definitely on opposite ends of the spectrum, but, but I don't.
Well, this doesn't really say anything. I mean, it says it's military, it doesn't say.
Right, it doesn't really, but to me as a board member, like, it's not partisan, like, you know what I'm saying?
It's not, but she chose to list a lot of partisan things in her.
Because that's what she does.
Because she said, well, I'm just saying, but that's what she chose to do. So that's why I'm bringing it up, because it's literally listed democratic, democratic, democratic. Whatever the other one was.
How does that?
I'm just stating a fact, that's all, she gave it to us.
And I'm having a conversation with you about how does that, how does that affect, just get me to understand where you're coming from. This is not a political goal.
I know that. I'm just stating what she gave us for the public. I'm repurposed.
It could be difficult for some, too harder for some to separate. This everyday life that she needs, then to then come to this unbiased, it could.
And you don't, and you don't think that we must. That's what I'm saying, like, we have to do that every day, we do that all the time.
But this is different. She's, she's like.
I don't find that any different.
Everyday, this is her job. She's running political campaigns and stuff for Democratic Party members. It's a little different. I'm just saying it could be more difficult to put it out there to separate.
But I would have to believe every single one of us at this table needs a certain way.
Yeah, but I don't spend my whole day doing.
No, my job is.
Yeah, my job is.
But I don't know when I spend my, my whole day, what my beliefs and what I do, that, that's all I come up with. I don't know what you're spending your whole day. Separate your work, separate what you're doing for your work or event.
No, I'm just saying that I would not have submitted a resume stating all my extracurricular, these aren't even paid jobs. These are extracurricular positions and stuff like that. That's all I'm saying. She put it in front of us, I'm just making it a point to bring it to light, that's all.
I think, Margaret, you do have a good point in, you know, it is a different perspective when you're up here. You have your, my children go, your children go here, you know, we're in this school, we're helping, the teachers are getting this. There is a different perspective on enlightenment, what's going on in the schools when you're helping out and having that affiliation with the teachers. I agree with you on that.
But he did have, it says, what, here? Not everybody who's sitting on board currently has a student in the district.
No, they didn't choose to take them out.
I know, the point was that you should have a student in the district and not everybody here has a student currently in the district.
No, well, yes, my point is, if you're going to sit on this board.
Maybe he'll bring her back into the district.
If we put him on the board, he's going to bring her back.
I don't know, I didn't ask him, did you?
We should have asked him.
Okay. I was going to, but I didn't.
We are, we are proponents and advocates for public school education and for our public school district. If you pull your child out, and it's just my opinion, you negate the ability. This is, this is the only time that I get a chance, I've said it over the years. It's the only time I get a chance to say yes or no. Otherwise, when election comes, people get elected and they come sit at the table and we just figure it out when we all get here. Okay? But you pull, you took your kids out to homeschool, child out to homeschool, just negates it for me.
I know a lot of people pulled their kids out to homeschool after all the COVID stuff and everything coming back. And they just never, they never returned. Does that make them bad people?
I understand he was a bad person.
I'm just asking.
No, it doesn't make, it doesn't make anybody a bad person. It makes you a choice.
Right.
Of course, because you do whatever you think you need to do for your children, absolutely.
But that doesn't mean he doesn't have other people's best interest and want to help. I mean, you're talking about somebody who still has six, seven years left to school.
Maybe they want to make it a better place, so they have that comfort.
Have that confidence.
A little concern that you think it's not already, I guess.
Well, that's not what she said, that she's saying that might be.
Which that's not.
I'm sorry, what?
But I know you're saying, I mean, that he.
Maybe, we don't know, we're speculating, I guess.
Well, and I guess too, going back to when you said about, I do, I do agree with you that sometimes just, I bring out something negative that doesn't make it bad, with weaknesses or whatever. Saying a weakness first is not necessarily a bad thing. What I found was that the weakness in the district was the board of education.
I didn't get that perception really at all. I felt like, I felt like that was a perception that he had, but in the last year, that perception has changed. This is the way I read that, because a year ago, yes, there was a lot of attacking going on. And of course, he was subjected to that like all the other residents. But what I got out of what he was saying was that he's realizing with the controversy about the transparency of the board is that it really isn't. Yes.
I got it, it's getting better.
Right, that it really isn't as much of a problem as what he was perceiving it to be, as what people were telling him. It was, is the way I understood how he answered that question.
I would, I would agree with you on that. But he then doesn't say anything positive about the district, just the parents and the community.
Yeah.
And he talks about good old days and.
Like Christmas.
Right, that, he did talk about going to the games.
I think he was talking about how the parents support the schools and how they all show up to the games and support, how the community supports the school and how, since we are such a small school district, you know, when something's going on, it's everybody there together, community members, school members, and that we all come together is the way.
Yeah, I didn't see that. I didn't, I didn't see it that way, because he listed city things and all of that. And I just, that was a school district. He started a school, I bet you want. Yeah. But his answer that I liked, and that made, said more to her, was when she talked about the difference in culture in that middle school building. And that's a big deal. And we, everyone sitting here at this table knows it's a big deal. And so I appreciated that as a, as a parent, she was, she put a focus on that as opposed to a good old days or a Christmas.
And then she talked about some about us, which I didn't really understand where she was going with it, talking about us standing up to the loud voices. That's what she said, so I wasn't really sure.
You should ask what exactly Monica would be the, the group.
I'm making an assumption here.
But you shouldn't.
And I would say, I would say, don't. But I, I would, if I, well, that's, that was, I had a different question.
Well, no, that's, that was the way I perceived what she was saying as well. And I don't know what she meant, that we were standing up to any loud voices. I wasn't.
So my two cents.
You have a task.
No, my, my two cents regarding what Margaret had said about pulling their daughter from school is, maybe it's an unpopular opinion, but, or I'm going to catch you for it, but I don't really care because it's a cause. My oldest too, going to Anchorage Bay, that's no, you know, secret. They could have gone here, they go where their dad lives in the district, so that's fine, whatever. But I, when I first got on the board in 2020, and kind of the comment I made to him is when we were talking about those academic reports and seeing how low everything was and how, how much of a struggle Jackson was having in kindergarten two years ago now. My first thought was, I had this eye opening thing, and I'm in the education field, pull him out and homeschool that kid. Because it's what he needs, because school, public schools run way the heck too fast for him. Everything needs to be, he understands it all, and it's proof by his N W B A scores I got in the mail today. But he needs it slowed down, and this was not working for him. And that was my first thought, like, these scores are not great. They're awful to start with, but I saw the changes that Renee was making with her math curriculum and this year with the English curriculum and revamping these things. So I was like, okay, well, let's, you know, we, I still have time in theory, because my kid's in kindergarten and had a tough career or something. And let's see how these changes play out and how well of a change it might be for him to see something different. And so I get, I get his perspective with his daughter, pulling him out and doing what's best for her and maybe coming back. Because I would have probably done the same thing, but I chose to stick around for another year or so and see what was going on. And it's working for him now, has the 92% of the N W B A. Going from nine to 92 is huge. And that comes from the changes in the curriculum and the way it's presented for the student. And so maybe he's seeing, after seeing Renee's academic review today, that, hey, they're making these changes and these are great changes. And it could be something my daughter's going to benefit from, so why not bring him? And I would have done the same thing. My sister-in-law, my husband's sister, lives on county line and is technically Richmond district. Has a kid who's the same age as Jackson and two younger as well. And they chose school of choice to go to Anchorage Bay. There's literally nothing we can do to convince them to come back to Richmond, no better. I can show her all this data, but she's doing what's best, what she feels is best for her kids. And, you know, the first thing they're like, why are you staying there, you know? But no, I still will throw it down their throat every chance I get. Look at these changes and these curriculums that we're being in the math field, the curriculums we're doing and how it's benefiting the students. But I have been in his situation too. Like, if you would have asked me this time last year, when he was on track to repeat kindergarten, I was really reconsidering, yes, I'm a teacher, but public education, just my, my first is a 4.2 GPA. And then there's Jackson, I'm going to be happy if he gets a D minus to get through school. They have different capabilities and they need different things. My first needs Anchorage Bay and all the things, the stuff he was used to for his foundation and continuing that foundation because he needs consistency. And Jackson needs the smaller district, because I could have very easily put Jackson over there. Or I could have homeschooled him because I work from home. Or I could have brought him online for me because I work online. But I felt it better because it's a small district, he's going to get to know the supports that he has and the changes to the curriculum that are coming. So I totally understand where he was coming from, pulling his daughter and possibly thinking about tossing her into, putting her back in.
So what's interesting is if you were interested in running in 2022 and you're that vested in the district, I feel like you'd have a little bit better of an understanding of what's going on. Like as far as like the budgeting goes, as far as what a board member's role is. And I just do see what I mean. If like you're so vested in your community and in your district that you would, you would have known some of those. Doing nothing to positively promote or, you know what I mean, the district or anything like that. And obviously you wouldn't if you didn't pull the kid, you know what I mean? You don't have anything positive to say. And I get your point though, like, okay, well, then you want to get on the board and see what's going on, you know, maybe get a better understanding of things and maybe bring her back, all of that, I, I can understand that. I just feel like if you were being truthful with me about how passionate you are about it, how you wanted to do it, and then other things got in the way, now, like, you would just be a little more educated on the ongoings. and then other things got in the way, now, like, you would just be a little more, um, educated on the ongoings.
Sure.
Is there anyone else that wants to add anything? Otherwise, I need someone to make a motion.
Make a motion to nominate Jessica Romanowski to fill the vacant school board position. Is that the correct way to say it?
Sound good to me. I need a second.
A second then.
So Margaret. Any, any further discussion? We have to wait till this. And she, I mean, Margaret made a motion, so we have to.
So ultimately, if there's a tie, you said?
We will, nothing will happen tonight, and we will, Brian and I will re-talk, and we hope to repost it.
Do we have to repost?
How about we have a vote before we start talking about the end of the, I think that's probably the more appropriate conversation.
Okay, well, is there any discussion? Thank you. We need to finish the motion. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so next motion.
Motion to, whatever Margaret said, for Mr. Steer.
Um, I need a second. I'll second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Now, okay. Now we do have that discussion about what happens.
We won't give the 29th to find someone. The 29th will find someone.
The I S D will.
Right now. Yep. So what do they? Okay, so we, we don't have a decision as far as these two out of what company, nobody, what happens. You said, you said he gets reposted? Well, Brian and I talked about reposting it.
If, if it didn't pass, you could, as a board, um, repost it and do another set of interviews. Question you have to decide is, are you going to ask candidates that interviewed and didn't pass to, can they go back and interview again?
We already had a hard time getting one candidate to interview.
You could not do anything.
I'd let it go to the county.
But you have, he can't do anything, it certainly can't do anything until.
Unless they go to the county.
Well, I guess.
Let it go to the county.
Let it go to the county and let them appoint somebody and then let it go to November.
Well, either, I'd like to make a, a note here. Either person that we chose to bring out, honestly, we have them for six months. I don't, you know, I don't know, we're concerned about either way or whatever way they're going. I don't believe they can cause that much. There'd take seven of us to get things passed and whatever. I just think either one of them is, is not going to hurt this board in the six months. They do have to rerun, and they have to get voted on. So really, whoever we bring on right now, we have them for six months.
Yeah, but the last two. So. Well, that's not true. It, it's, you can't just say, just have them for six months. We do, because the reality is, you appoint someone in the position for six months, three months, you know, however it happens till the election comes. And if they both choose to run, it becomes, exactly. You, that person has sat on the board, and that person is more, eh, more likely people, not more likely, but people will look. Oh, that leaves already on the board, out of both of them.
Maybe not even realize that it's only been six months. They'll just know.
That's right. It's very, it's very important, I'm thinking. So are we gonna, are you asking us, do you want to repost or just do you want to repost?
I don't have a problem reposting it, and then if we don't get any applicants, obviously, then it just, it goes. But how does he, how does that work with the I S D or?
Might devolve to that.
Yeah.
But where does he get his names from? I mean, he's just looking, oh, somebody at 8886 needs to.
Well, he gets this information. He gets, he gets, he gets information of the people that he has, um, who have applied. He'll, he can take information, um, people that have served on the board and not on the board anymore. He can have conversation, that's, that's where it comes from. I don't, I don't disagree with reposting it, but isn't it, you've got to have so many days to have it posted? Or how long? Right, isn't it so many, isn't that what it's always posted?
I'd have to do an ad, so to get it out, there's a public ad, so we'd have to let it go till, assuming we can get an ad in the paper either next, probably Sundays. So we're probably looking to post it till the 21st of June, which is Friday, which would be interviews, 24.
It would be our next meeting. So it's not, it has to be posted for so many days, that's not part of the criteria?
No.
Okay. Just has to be public. Then I would do that. Our next board meeting is the 24th. If you've got candidate, you can have the interviews. If not, you go to the highest. How about the two that interview? Can they re-interview?
We can create a new set of questions, right?
We can.
So what reservations each of us may have had for them, we can then re-ask.
I'm saying.
No.
You can not re-ask.
You have to ask the same questions. If those two come back, you're right, two more people, everybody gets the same questions. Everybody.
You can't develop new questions. Everybody has to have the same.
It has to be the same question.
Why would you say they don't have to reapply?
Quite frankly, listen, you think we tell both of them, we could come, if they're, want to come back, and hell no. Who would? Well, I'll just run. They both said they're running, but I could just run.
Well, that's, that's their choice, right?
Right, yes.
If that is their choice. Besides showing up that day, then there's only one person to.
I would say they have to reapply. I'm against reposting it, because we didn't even follow what we said we were going to do regards to the first post. Um, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm trying not to, whatever, but like, it's, I mean, somebody didn't, didn't apply in time, and we allowed them to interview.
That's what it is. It can't change that.
No, I know, I know it is what it is. We can't change it. I'm just saying that that's, I mean, what's the point posting it?
But then at the end of the vote, it'll probably be the same anyways.
Maybe, I mean, maybe. Okay, so I have one negative, one positive.
Mine was, I don't care.
That's a yes to me now. If I mean posting.
I'm fine with reposting and re.
If they choose what to.
If they want to.
Danielle?
What if they choose if they don't want to, then they're not in the running, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And I can let them know when I call.
Correct, okay.
Danielle, you want to repost?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, Brian, please.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
I'm sorry. So then you're gonna, if, if you ask those two candidates to come back to the table, now they have an advantage to the others.
Correct. Totally. But.
But you can't, what you can just, we can't pick a whole another set of new question, right?
You'd have to do new questions for all of them.
I mean, I could do, we could do some new questions for all of them.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah, that's what I mean.
I had a ton of questions that I could draw from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Throw it away.
No, I was just clarifying that we'd have.
I guess I'll, I'll, my two cents is, I only ask the question, is in this process as a board, you, you get to define how this operates much like your student, just when you define how we're going to roster you just about. In any issue that has come before this board, if a motion didn't pass, we don't keep bringing it up.
It's maybe next year.
So I guess my two cents for you to consider is, we have two candidates, they did not get the vote of the board. It is what it is, repost, and we see if we get any more candidates. I guess what would, what would they say differently? Again, this is your, this is, what would they say differently? That's going to sway someone or, yep. They, my, my second. The motion was presented, it was voted on, it didn't pass. The idea of reposting, again, is to see, is there anybody else? And if there's nobody else, then we go to.
We go to the I S D.
Again, I'm just throwing this out as something to think about, but as a board, you need.
I think that makes, I accept that. But can we just make sure that the deadline is the deadline?
Yes.
Four P M on Friday, the 21st. So I just want to clarify, are we allowing the two?
No. I say no. To interview.
No, I think your rationale makes sense.
I, I agree too.
It kind of goes back to the question you asked, the decision board is, if you don't like it.
See, this is why we need a mail.
It's a different.
It's a, no, I mean.
It's not. That's what I, ah, he's just looking at a different, we're, we're in it. And he, and he's just given.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is what, Brian's going to repost it. The cutoff will be the 21st at 4 P M. I will, we will make sure that we will not accept anything after that. And our two candidates cannot, I will call them, I will let them know what happened, and I would, they cannot re.
Did they need further?
He, he did. I, I thought so, yes, about that, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, any further discussion?
Can you just express the attitude for wanting the interest?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yep. Absolutely. Okay, anything else on that, before we move on? Okay, um, next item on our agenda, and I don't know if we need this or not, I have a bunch of things, I'm worried about it. Um, is our true blue moment. Um, I'm just going to go down the line today. Can this any fun, any raise?
Yeah, I guess. They used to be culture. I know. She had a flashback.
Other rates.
Um, yes, I would just like to, um, put a shout out to the Richmond High School for putting on another fun field day for, um, the students this year. I know, um, the kids loved it, they loved being, uh, we, it was, um, one of the main dances on the grainer or something, on the football field. All the kids were out there, it was quite fun for them. Um, so I just, it was, um, old school feeling that the students were out, so it was pretty nice. Anyone else? No, I think I'm saying.
So I know I talked about it, oh, sorry.
I hate for you to hear.
Interesting. I know that I talked about it at the last meeting, but we didn't have the cameras on, and I just wanted to make sure that I said it, while the cameras are on. Um, that I had an opportunity to attend the kindergarten graduation or award ceremony, however you want to put it. Um, it was the cutest thing ever, but, um, and I, I don't want to instill your thunder, because maybe you're going to say something about that. Okay. But, um, the kindergarteners were so well behaved. I was so, so happy, I was so surprised, like, they were better behaved than the audience. Um, and that's just facts.
That's true.
Um, I mean, they sat on that stage that whole time, and they just all were very, very well behaved. And, um, so shout out to, um, to the kindergarteners for doing such a great job.
Maybe else? I don't have anything. Kelly?
Um, I just want to say congratulations to the varsity baseball team. Um, they did make it, hmm, they made it to regionals, right? Is that where they got cut off?
No.
Quarterfinals, I know, the regionals was the one, then quarterfinals. Um, I know they did, they had a tough opponent, they were going up against Flint Powers, which is a really good.
Private school.
Yeah. Um, yeah. So, and they were unable to secure the title, but they did a fantastic job up until that point. So I'm proud of them for going as far as they did. It was a big accomplishment.
Anything else? Okay. Danielle?
I'm also.
Mark?
I echo, um, Kelly. They're a very young team. They came up against private school kids, and I hate it, um, but they had a tremendous season. So kudos to them and the coaches. And the kindergarten ceremony, um, I spoke to one of the parapros, Lisa Vanscooter, and it, it goes unsaid too often. I watched those parapros finagle and wrangle some of those kids to get them in line and, and get in to walk, to do their thing, and, and then watch a pair run around the back to get the kid on the other side. It goes just unsaid too much. Those people are amazing, and they care and love those kids, and those kids love them back, and they just, they just do a good job with their kids.
Margaret, I, I suck at that. I think that we all heard some of what their days are like. It's crazy. Okay, Ms. Wamsley, Superintendent Legislative Update, please.
There is no legislative update. Second is, we received a card, um, I think it's Betty Gradue. I don't know what, it's cursive writing, it's, or your classic cursive writing, sorry, but it misses that. But it's Matt Mish's non, complimenting, uh, the, um, count, or the graduation ceremony. The last board meeting was talked about the student writers, so I have the book, Chloe Locke and Madeline Bookie, who published. I tagged the book on here, so if you want to take a minute, look at it. That's the book that they're published writers in. And finally, I will conclude with this, Mrs. Staples. I wish you nothing but the best in your next chapter of your professional career. Uh, you have helped me grow better as a professional, and I know you've done great things, so congratulations.
All right, Alsa?
Um, I'll start at the bottom, Margaret, on our items of interest on the board. Uh, just want to let everyone know, we started our interviews for student board rap this evening. We had interview number one. We have four more that we will do next week, and our goal is to, our meeting on the 24th, come back with a person. But if the candidates two through five, or anything like number one, we've got our word out. Kind of voice. Yes. It was really cool, really cool.
Good. Danielle?
Um, I am also.
Ellen?
No.
Uh, Cindy?
I'm good tonight, thank you.
Candice?
Um, yes, I just wanted to, um, recognize that we are missing one more member here tonight. Um, and I wanted to, um, wish Angela Vasito, um, good luck in her new endeavors and thank her personally for all her hard work on this school board in the past five and a half years. And, um, I know she's all heart for the district, and she, to me, was a perfect example of what a school board member should be. And, um, I just wish her all the luck. Good adventure.
Um, I just have a statement I'd like to make to our community. Um, as the school year has come to an end, I'd like to thank the following people. First and foremost, I want to thank all our dedicated teachers, staff, and administrators for their unwavering commitment to the success of our students. Your passion, flexibility, creativity, and tireless efforts have created an environment where each child has the opportunity to succeed. Students, thank you for your hard work throughout the school year. You have embraced new challenges, learned valuable lessons, and demonstrated exceptional growth, which is what we heard tonight. And parents, I want to thank you all for your contribution in ways some are small, large, and unimaginable. Thank you for your partnership between home and school, which is very important, and we appreciate all that you do every day for our schools and our children. Um, the passion and strength within our schools and this community makes our district truly a special place for our children. I want to wish all of our staff, students, parents, a safe, happy, and refreshing summer. Okay, next item on our agenda is our public comments. Uh, since the last board meeting, there has been no emails received to the board. Uh, there was no public comments that needed addressing from our last board meeting. At this time, any member of the public may address the board, please, I think there's a sign-in sheet there, and state your name. You'll have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments? Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Kathy Lauren. Sitting in the audience here and listening to the conversation about the two applicants, it was very disappointing. It's very obvious that three of you knew the one candidate, had a personal little conversation going on, which I think that's rude in a meeting. We did whatever was going on before the top of the floor, we do interview.
While we were leaving, talked about.
Yeah, but this is a meeting, a board meeting, and you're Board of Education. So if you're a Board of Education, you support the teachers. Teachers always gave assignments and always had deadlines. And if you didn't get your paper in by the deadline, sometimes you couldn't resubmit and you got a zero. Rumor in this community is Mr. Steyer's application came in late. I want to know if that's true and if so, why was he allowed to even sit at this table? That's embarrassing and that's wrong. And the comments that were going back and forth about his military career and the other ones, nonprofit career, that was really disgusting.
Also military. Excuse me, you cannot endorse the board.
And when he brought up his military career and that, but also that a male needs to be on the board, that's showman's pig. So I want some answers and I'm very disappointed.
You only have one question, correct? You want to know if it was late?
Yes. It sounds like it was by the conversation. And I guess I would really like to know if it was late, then why was he allowed? We all have deadlines.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, being no further comments, we will move on to our action items. I am looking for a motion for the approval of the 2024 mileage tax request. Move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2024 tax rate request, L dash 4029, as presented in the attached documentation. Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion or any further discussions? I have a note on here. Tammy, does this need to be a roll call vote?
Hey, Tammy, it's a resolution, so.
It was on here, just a note. So I'm going to do a roll call vote. Margaret?
Hi.
Candace? Kelly?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the K-12 English Language Arts Professional Development. I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve status for the K-12 English Language Arts Teacher Professional Development for a total net to receive $44,100 as presented at the May 13th, 2024 meeting, for which the $33,750 K through five professional development shall be funded through Section 35J Professional Development Curriculum and Supports Grant and six through 12 professional development shall be funded through the Title II A and Non-Grant General Fund.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of an overnight trip of robotics to Indianapolis. Move to accept.
Oh, sorry.
No, all right.
I motion to accept the recommended, recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight extended robotic student trip to Indianapolis as presented at the June 10th, 2024 Board of Education meeting and outline in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I need someone now to basically repeat that motion, but put in there the Grand Rapids. I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight slash extended cheerleader camp trip to Grand Rapids, Michigan, as presented at the June 10th, 2024 Board of Education meeting and outline in the attached documentation. Do I have support?
Support.
I'm going to do it. Kelly, she's sitting next to me. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Being no further business, the board meeting will adjourn at 10:44. Thank you, everyone.